That's the cable. It's for a phone. This is the same charger? I could also just... Yeah. And... Oh, this is a... Oh, an iPhone one. Old iPhone. If you... No, I can get it from my car. There's more like it.
My family loves it.
And I've been...
How long are you gonna live on? The white thing.
Oh, yeah. No, it's actually a tomato.
Yeah?
I'll be here. I'll be over there.
To go along.
You got me around. Walking home. I did stop. I pulled out my garbage cans. Oh, okay. Yeah, as you should. Oh, because then you can get your cars. That's like... Got the trash.
Was that a key?
Is everything teed in? Like, can you get... Can I get... Might as well do it now. It's like, yeah. That's pretty funny.
Good evening, everyone. We'll go ahead and start this regular session. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Duran?
Here.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Here.
Councilmember Mangone?
Here.
Councilmember Schumacher?
I'm here.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Here.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Here.
Seven members present. We have a quorum.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone, please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Yes. Everyone, please stand. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you for that. And we're gonna go ahead and start with just some of our special announcements tonight. Breast Cancer Awareness Month is this month of October. A time to honor survivors, remember those we've lost, and support the ongoing fight against breast cancer. Breast cancer continues to be one of the most common cancers among women, and early detection truly saves lives. This month serves as a reminder for everyone to schedule regular screenings and encourage loved ones to do the same. We also recognize the organizations, healthcare professionals, and community advocates who provide critical support and education throughout the year. On behalf of the Ventura City Council, I want to thank all of those who continue to raise awareness, fund research, and stand with individuals and families impacted by breast cancer. Together through awareness, compassion, and action, we can make a lasting difference in the fight against breast cancer. The month of October is also Domestic Violence Awareness Month, and this is, again, a time to raise awareness, to support survivors, and reaffirm our community's commitment to ending domestic violence. Domestic violence affects individuals and families across all backgrounds, and its impact is both deeply personal and far-reaching. This month reminds us that everyone deserves to feel safe in their home and in their relationships. We recognize and thank the local organizations, advocates, and first responders who provide critical resources, shelter, and support to survivors throughout the year. The city of Ventura stands united in breaking the silence, promoting prevention, and supporting those on their path to healing and safety. Together as a community, we can create a culture of respect, compassion, and zero tolerance for abuse. Moving on to our... In our agenda to closed session report, Mr. City Attorney?
Mayor, the council took up both items on the closed session agenda, and there's no reportable action.
Thank you. Onto City Council Communications. Do we have any councilmembers who'd like to report back? Councilmember Campos?
Good evening. There's slides up today. I don't know how well you can see them. The City Council is looking for more volunteers for the following city commissions, the ones listed below. The applications can be found on the city website, and I would encourage anyone who's really interested in participation in... And public engagement with the city, or are just curious about how things work, to do an application and interview if you have the expertise that qualifies for these. Some of them need little expertise, just living in the city of Ventura. Next slide. We have a great new business in District One. It's called The Foundry Ventura, located at 220 East Thompson, next to the Surfer Point Cafe in the little L-shaped plaza. The Foundry's a learning space designed to give people skills to design, create, and produce their own jewelry through wax metal casting, stone shaping, polishing and setting, and numerous other skills that are old-time skills, skills that have been with us for a century or more. You can visit the website, thefoundryventura.com, or drop by and speak with Becky, the talented owner of what she hopes to be Ventura's premier jewelry workshop. And, next slide. Dia de los Muertos is coming to Ventura big time. I know several of the schools not mentioned here are having programs from now through November... Well, through Halloween. On Saturday, November 1st, downtown will come to life with a car show in the East Main Main Street Moves area, probably from Chestnut down past California. I'm not sure if it'll go all the way to Oak. There's also a Dia de los Muertos event this Thursday, the first of the school events, happening at De Anza Middle School. There's plenty of parking there, and everybody's welcome to come see what the young people do with that. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. This afternoon, I attended a Fair Board Executive Meeting. The topic of discussion was the new Surfers Point parking lot and the annual pass and day use fees moving forward. I just want to let the community know that the Executive Board is making the recommendation to the full Fair Board to set the annual passes at $150 per year and the day use fee at $5. So currently, it's $125 per year and $4 for a day use pass. Fair Board staff actually conducted a comprehensive cost analysis, and they actually concluded that for the first year, maybe two, they will be running that parking lot at a loss. And they're keeping those fees low intentionally so they don't put more of a burden on the people who use that coastal zone. So I applaud them for those efforts. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any other councilmember comments? Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I just wanted to remind everybody that tomorrow is the Ventura Housing Committee meeting at 3:00 PM. Also, on the 29th of October is our Housing and Homeless Committee, and that's at 2:00 PM at City Hall in the Community Room. And then a couple saved the dates. On November 6th, we have the Fallen Firefighters Memorial Service at the Government Center at 10:00 AM. And also, on November the 11th, on Veterans Day, there's gonna be a Veterans Memorial Service at... Right there at the park on Main Street. And lastly, the YMCA on November 12th is having a prayer breakfast at 7:30 in the morning, and it is free to the public. It's gonna be a wonderful time of... We have a great speaker, and we have a super wonderful band that's coming to play. And that's... I would just say, if you want to go to that register as soon as you can, because seating is limited, and it is a free event, and it's wonderful. So, thank you, Madam Mayor.
Great. Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll go ahead and do just some quick announcements myself. I attended the Labor's Apprenticeship Graduation this past weekend, where more than 30 individuals graduated with their certificate, and just excited for them to have this new pathway for a future that they were all really excited about. And so, we presented certificates along with Councilmember Schumacher, and then also attended the first Filipino Fiesta celebration over at the County Museum. Great turnout, great food, and great ambiance. So, very excited to have been able to welcome people and host the event there. So, those are my announcements. If we don't have any others, then we'll go ahead to our City Manager Communications.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. We are still seeking applicants for our Design Review Committee and Water Commission. The application period is open through December 19th. These advisory groups provide critical input on urban design and development and water resource planning. Our Design Review Committee applicants, and successful applicants, must be city residents from the development community with knowledge of urban design and the ability to interpret development plans. For our Water Commission, residents must reside within Ventura Water Service area and demonstrate knowledge or interest in water-related fields. Again, citizen... Our city residency is not required. Applicants just must live within the city's water service area. Details and applications are available on the city's website. Speaking of water, the public is invited to a series of community open houses at our water reclamation facility, beginning with the first one this Saturday, October 25th, from 9:00 AM to 11:00 AM. All interested are invited to come and explore the infrastructure investments that protect Ventura's water and wastewater future, learn about advanced water treatment, and discover how we're building sustainable supplies for generations to come. If you're interested, please RSVP on the city's website, again, listed on the screen. Our Ventura Aquatic Center is celebrating its 20th anniversary, also happening this Saturday, October 25th, from 1:00 to 4:00 PM, and that's at our community park at 901 South Kimball Road. Come on out, enjoy a free open swim, arts and crafts, a pumpkin plunge, giveaways, and more. You can find all details and reserve your spot on our website. And lastly, our next meetings of the City Council will be on November 4th and November 18th. That concludes my remarks. Thank you.
Thank you. Moving on to our public communications portion of the agenda, where members of the public may speak on any city-related topic that's not listed on tonight's agenda, please note that under the Brown Act, the City Council cannot discuss, deliberate, or take action on items raised during this public communications period. And to show respect in an inclusive and respectful way, you are welcome to use the American Sign Language sign for applause by raising your hands and gently twisting your wrists back and forth. Initial public communications period is limited to the first 20 speakers, with priority given to in-person participants. And if you wish to speak, now would be the time to sign up, either with the city clerk or by using the raised hand feature if you're joining us virtually. This ensures that we can have an accurate count of speakers. And so, at this time, I will go ahead and ask the city clerk if we have any speakers for this portion.
Thank you, Mayor. We have six speakers for general public comment.
Thank you. And because it's 10 or fewer speakers, each speaker will have three minutes, so at this time, I will go ahead and open public comment now.
Thank you, Mayor. Our first speaker is Philip Fields, followed by Wendy Chato, Kevin Daly, Barbara Brown, George DeLeon, and Casey Rodriguez.
Where is the agenda for the Climate Subcommittee that council ordered at the goal-setting of February 2nd this year? Why are you, City Council, delaying as a responsible, incorrigible institution, failing to live up to your own goals? Given your irresponsibility and incompetence, you must... All of you councilmen resign, 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 along with your incompetent and unfit city manager and city attorney. You council and your city manager and city attorney must provide a letter to the State Assembly in support of the Make Polluters Pay bill to compel fossil fuel polluters pay for decades of spewing and emitting carcinogenic methane nitrous oxide, carbon, and PFAs which poison our food, water, and each second we breathe air which is costing and costing us our health and life. The backstop's with you, City Council. What about your responsible pattern to kill trees every time you correct sidewalks that need repair? You must respect the lives of these mature trees to correct the sidewalks without unnecessarily killing these mature trees, because you're deteriorating our climate by killing these mature trees that purify the air, we breathe and give us anxiety, and decrease heat for free... Trees are the lungs of our planet. The mature trees take decades to grow to such heights, and we natives call them our grandmother trees. We must keep them alive. Make polluters pay. Make polluters pay. Make polluters pay here and now, from now on. City Council, what legacy are you gonna leave? You must sign with the state, because if you don't, you might not be able to continue here, because we will give you... We'll cast the vote of punishment against the council that fails to live up to our climate and against any bureaucrat that is neglecting its job. That must be complied diligently, and it must be active engagement, responsible and conscientious actions that set an example to our future generations. May we all stay together defending our climate, defending our country, and having our Constitution defended to the last breath we do have. We must honor our Constitution by deed, by action, by example.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Wendy Chato, followed by Kevin Daly.
Hello, Madam Mayor and City Council Members. I wanted to let you know I appreciate the sidewalks that have been fixed on Victorian Telephone, all the way up to Telegraph. It is a big help for us that are in wheelchairs, walkers, anybody that has to walk that direction. I was very happy with that, and thank you very much.
Next speaker is Kevin Daly, followed by Barbara Brown.
City Council and fellow citizens, at the last City Council meeting, the City Council voted for 3 to 3 to raise our water rates. This is the time of high inflation and living expenses affecting the lower and middle classes in the city. Under Proposition 218, the city... A notice will be mailed to all water customers, which will enable them to vote against the increases. There are three things that citizens in the city can do. First of all, wait for the official Prop 218 notice in the mail. Secondly, follow the instructions in the notice to submit your written protest by the stated deadline. And third, encourage friends, neighbors, and fellow residents to do the same. If the rate protest does not reach a majority, the matter will return to the City Council in December, where the City Council will have one final opportunity to vote it down. The following people voted against the water rates. Keep this in mind when they're up for reelection. Liz Campos voted against the raising of the water rates. So did Jim Duran, and I believe Alex Mangone as well. Doug Halter, Bill McReynolds, Ryan Schumacher, and Mayor Palacios, who has done things that were unconstitutional and violated people's First Amendment rights in the past, also voted to raise your water rates. Is this something that the majority of the citizens in the city of Ventura can afford at this time? Thank you.
Next speaker is Barbara Brown, followed by George DeLeon.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Barbara Brown, and I'm the Chair of the College Area Community Council. I would like to welcome you to the College Area this evening. I know many of you here tonight are passionate about the city and might like to get in more involved, or maybe you just simply can't attend each of the City Council meetings. That's where community councils step in. Community councils are organizations designed to provide a forum for community issues, a conduit for communications with the city, and an opportunity for neighborhood problem-solving. There are five community councils in the city where you can learn more about what's going on. The College Area Community Council covers Hill Street to Mills Road, east to west, and the 126 freeway to the hillsides, south to north. The other community councils, and we have two other members here tonight, are the Westside Community Council, the Pierpont Bay Community Council, Midtown Community Council, East Ventura Community Council, and Montalvo Community Council. And while each of these cover specific neighborhoods, you are welcome to attend any of the community councils you choose. College Area Community Council meets from January through October monthly on the fourth Wednesdays of the month. Our next meeting is tomorrow at 7:00 p.m. at CAPS, which is right next door. If you'd like to attend in person, but if you'd like to attend on Zoom, our Zoom link is at our website on CACventura.com, so you can watch it in the comfort of your home. We're currently looking for a project coordinator and a website administrator. If you're interested in volunteering to help us out, we would love to hear from you. My email address, if you're interested, is BarbaraBrownVentura@gmail.com. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor, council members, and staff. My name is Jorge, AKA George DeLeon. I live at 205 Virginia Drive in a truck to live a better, healthier lifestyle. I spend a lot of time walking in our city. I've been to every single one of our districts, and I would like to just bring to your attention that there's just a lot of garbage out there, litter in almost every crevice of our beautiful city. And I would like to encourage not only our citizens, but maybe the City Council to create some sort of an incentivized program to get people to not litter as much and to pick up a little bit more than what they litter. The biggest concerns that I've noticed, which are completely outside of your jurisdiction, are the railroad tracks between Johnson Drive all the way out to Ventura. I usually do a lot of hiking through those areas, and the amount of trash that is collected under the bridges is just horrible. Imagine when it rains, especially in that intersection in Montalvo, when it rains and all that stuff ends up in our beautiful ocean. And when people come through those railroad tracks through Amtrak and they see Ventura and all they see is trash as they come into our city. Number one. Number two is, what happens when you drive, you feel how these roads are kind of bad, but when you see it firsthand and you kind of trip in those potholes, it's, there's just, we need to get an improvement on that. And just wanted to share those things with you, that if you haven't necessarily visited our city by foot, I encourage our citizens to do so. And if there's, I know that there's a couple of clubs and some organizations that have actually put their forces together to pick up trash, but I think that there should be almost like a weekly encouragement to create these trash pickups. And then if so, or maybe even provide trash cans and some safety gear for us to be able to do so in a safe and maybe even more organized way. Thank you for that.
Next speaker is Chris Amet, followed by our final speaker, Casey Rodriguez.
Good evening. My name is Chris Amet. I am the founder of Native Monarchs, a nonprofit conservation effort to save monarch butterflies and their overwintering sites. I'm going to read this letter that I have sent. "But as you prepare for the vote on Ventura's 2025 General Plan tonight, I want to sincerely thank you for listening to the community voices and for considering my previous recommendations to protect the monarch butterfly overwintering sites in our city. Your inclusion of stronger conservation measures shows true leadership and care for Ventura's natural heritage. However, the work does not end with tonight's vote."
I'm sorry, this is public comment for items not on tonight's agenda.
Not on, okay.
Yeah.
You could do public comment when we have general plan and when we're discussing it. Yeah, I can do that.
Okay, thank you.
No problem.
Sorry.
Mayor, our final speaker, Casey Rodriguez.
First, I note my privilege to be here to speak. As we embark on item seven tonight, I am excited to continue showing up with love, light, and gratitude in the years to come, reminding hands, remaining hands and feet that brings our city together. Building unity and growing in love must be top priority. Tonight, I realize in order to successfully do this, self-accountability is instrumental. And as a leader, I must emphasize this step. Tonight, I offer a genuine apology to those who I may have caused unintended pain or stress during my personal healing and learning journey. I have lived a very unexpected yet grateful five-years-plus journey where a lot of wisdom and experience was needed, and in those moments of lack, I note I might have caused a couple unintended hiccups. Those out there know who I'm speaking of. I can't say names, so please note. I truly acknowledge, and I am sorry, but I have had the privilege to learn and to get wisdom, and so I am excited to journey together for a better future. With the historical success of our city's land acknowledgements and being an instrumental leader in this success, I must give a sincere thank you to the very courageous first groups, individuals who conducted the first land acknowledgements in Ventura years ago, such as our beloved Lake County Supervisor Carmen Mares, Recycling Air Coalition, Food and Water Watch, CAWS, Sea Frog, Pentagonia, Unitarian Universalist Church, Museum of Ventura County, VC Dems, and the Democratic Club of Ventura, as well as the X Games. Those bold organizers paved the way to this historical city's success. Please send a letter in support of the Make Polluters Pay Bill and Easy Ray to be wise land stewards. Lastly, happy National Disability Employment and Rariness Month and National Italian-American Heritage Month. Cheers to all in those groups. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. And Mr. City Manager, any follow-up to public comment?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. I did have a couple of points related to the trash and potholes comments. The city does have a team that addresses beautification in the city, as well as a team that fills potholes and repairs cracks in roadways and some minor paving work. We have a smartphone application, it's called Ventura Connects. We encourage anybody visiting the city, working in the city, or who lives in the city to download that, use that to report instances of graffiti vandalism, trash accumulation, potholes, and so forth. That report will go directly to the teams responsible for fixing those, and we'll get to those just as quickly as possible. So we'd really appreciate hearing from the public in a timely way when that happens. Second, on the water rates item, the City Council voted at its last meeting to initiate the Proposition 218 process related to increasing the water rates. The actual water rate increase vote will take place on December 9th. So that's it, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you for that clarification. Moving on to our consent items on the agenda tonight, we have six consent items, and so if council has any questions, comments, no votes, or requests to pull an item, now is the time to let me know. If not, I will need a motion to approve or to move the items. And before that, I'll go to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. There's no public comment on consent items.
Okay, thank you. So I will need a motion to accept these consent items.
Move to approve.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second.
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Mangone?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Placios?
Yes.
Seven ayes, and the motion carries.
Thank you. Moving on to our public hearing items, item number seven is the Resolution to Adopt the 2050 General Plan and Certifying the Final Environmental Impact Report. We will go ahead and have staff situated, want to make sure that adequate public noticing has been met.
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this item was adequately noticed.
Thank you. So I'll go ahead and open the public hearing at this time and turn it over to staff whenever you are ready for your presentation.
Good evening, City Council, City Manager, City Attorney. For the record, Maruha Klense, Assistant Director of the Community Development Department, and super excited to be here tonight for a significant milestone for the city and you as City Council, acting on this extensive document tonight that will guide the vision of the city for the next 25 years. It's been quite a bit of time to get to this point, and it wouldn't have been successful without the 110,000 people in our city talking to friends, connecting directly with us through all the various portals that we made available, public meetings, pop-ups, surveys, websites, emails, telephone calls, office hours, to garner as much public feedback as we can over the past five and a half, practically six years since inception. With me at the table is Community Development Director Rachel Diamond, Matt Maddox with Rincon Consulting, who did our EIR, our Environmental Impact Report, and Matt Ramey, our General Plan Consultant with Ramey &amp; Associates. Online, we have our Seca Attorney Shawna Inspector with BBK, and we will get started with our presentation. So the first few slides I'm going to go into, kind of give the background for the benefit of anybody online or in the public that hasn't been to one of these meetings recently, or maybe it's their first time. So the General Plan is a long-term policy document that's going to guide the city for the next 25 years. It's updated every 10 to 15 years. It can be updated at the discretion of council or through a private application. It can be updated legally four times a year, and when you think about that, we're able to touch this document 100 times over its life for the city. And that's really telling, as it's a living, breathing document that can move with the city, move with the community, change with the community, and will not be static, thank you, and will not be static sitting on a shelf. It sets the stage for the next 25 years and to move with us as a community. It preserves and enhances our community strengths, addresses topics of concern, and there are eight required elements per state law. We have land use, circulation, housing, noise, conservation, safety, open space, and environmental justice. We have six phases of the General Plan process, all of which have had community engagement since the very beginning in spring of 2020 with our discovery phase, followed by visioning, developing alternatives, developing policy, developing the plan, and now here at the review and adoption phase. There's been extensive community outreach over the past five years. You've seen this slide before, council, but for the benefit of the public, we have made many impressions throughout the city, two times with our water mailers reaching 72,000 customers, ads in our Park and Rec Activity Guide, dedicated websites, social media blasts for every public forum that we could do, even advertisement on our Auto Center electronic billboard, reaching over 1.5 million people. All in all, we hit every media platform that we could, print, online, YouTube videos, et cetera, to make sure we let everybody know about this critical moment for the city of Ventura. We had 33 General Plan Advisory Committee meetings, or known as GPAC, five rounds of meetings with our neighborhood community councils, five workshops, six educational forums, 17 pop-up workshops, nine sets of office hours, 14 City Council meetings, seven Planning Commission meetings, and eight online surveys. The organization of the General Plan is much like a chapter book. Each element has its own chapter, and the city has additional elements that, early on in the process, the city and the GPAC decided to include, in addition to the eight that are required. These are arts and culture, historic preservation, sorry, lost my place, parks, no, I'm sorry, that's it, arts and culture, historic preservation, and economic development. That's the third one, forgive me. So how to use a General Plan. Each chapter or element is organized by goals and policies. It includes an introduction, statutory requirements, context, key considerations, and again, those goals and policies and implementation actions. It's important to note that not every goal and policy has an implementation action. So we published the General Plan draft on April 16th of this year. We had a four-month public comment period, 120 days. During that timeframe, we had two Planning Commission workshops, three City Council workshops, and we had 103 public comments received from 80 individuals' organizations. This means that 23 people came in multiple times with additional thoughts, which is great. That means that we gave enough time to the community to really sit with it. If they had another idea or another contribution to provide, they were able to go back in and share that additional thought. This matrix is included as Attachment F to your staff report, and staff went comment by comment to address how that comment was addressed, or where they could find that relative information in the plan document itself. The draft document was published for Planning Commission with an addendum on September 19th. So summary of all the overall draft General Plan refinements as a result of that public comment period, we have 38 new policies and actions after that publication in April. That is a result of feedback over the 120-day period, that's feedback from the City Council in your May sessions and Planning Commission direction, and that's also nine of which are from our Environmental Impact Report mitigation measures. We also had minor revisions to 59 policies and actions throughout the document, based on council feedback, Planning Commission feedback, and public comment. 786 policies and actions remain unchanged since the publication in April. We also added additional narrative throughout the document, particularly our parks, open space, and now conservation element, as well as additions to our glossary. So on September 24th, the draft document was presented to Planning Commission. At the Planning Commission, we received 12 comment letters, comments regarding the Olivas Park specific plan and mapping, monarch butterfly and other biological policies, publication timing, a memorandum regarding our housing element, and general support for the General Plan. On the day of the hearing, we had seven in-person speakers, comments regarding our commercial, tourist-oriented land use designation, or CTO, particularly regarding height and the inclusion of housing, support for the General Plan and our historic preservation element, request for additional policies for monarch butterflies, and a discussion about the Neighborhood Center land use designation. So the Planning Commission unanimously recommended approval of the document and the certification of the Environmental Impact Report with revisions to four policies. The first policy is in our Economic Development Element, ED 1.18, or Energy Infrastructure. You'll see the strikeout there of Southern California Edison and an underscore to expand and diversify clean and alternative energy infrastructure to support existing businesses and help attract new businesses in Ventura. This was done with the intent to not limit opportunities to just one energy provider, to really diversify and see that we can maybe work with other providers to help diversify our energy portfolio. The second is in our Parks and Open Space Conservation Element, which is an Implementation Action 22, which is involving the overwintering monarch butterfly roost impact avoidance. And the concern here stemmed from not wanting to impact agricultural operations and procedures of our ag and farmers. We've noted this in another public comment letter, and the revision into this policy at commission addresses that concern. By way of, for projects proposed within undeveloped parcels, the city will require that the roosting survey be done, so that ag operations and production involving our ag and farms are not affected by the need to do surveying to hinder their operation for food productivity. The third policy that was amended, that you have received quite a bit of feedback on from the public, is LU 6.2 Industrial Compatibility. This was done at the Planning Commission to create a more neutral policy and addressing when new development comes in that's adjacent to an industrial site. The new development would be required to have a buffer or setback or other design parameter that be required for whatever regulatory agency or oversight is of that operation to ensure more harmonious coexistence between the two. Prior, it would be just on the residential development that would come in. Planning Commission felt this was a way to create any new development that would come in would be subject to making this adjustment. This does not mean we go back in time with the existing operators. This is a forward This is a forward-focused policy, but we do understand that council has received some concerns about this, so we have a backup slide with some suggested wording and the original wording for you to consider in your deliberations. The fourth policy that was amended was in our environmental justice element, which clarifies more of the intent with it, it doesn't change really anything beyond just better wording, to discourage developments that would result in sensitive land uses adjacent to local sources of air pollution. What that looks like is staff would work with, let's say, a childcare provider that wants to be right next to the freeway, maybe there's an opportunity to find a different site for them, or to encourage them to use different construction methodologies or materials to help offset that, a local pollutant. Other key general plan changes, we updated our Parks and Open Space Element to more thoroughly address the city's open space. I think this element got the most refinement through the public comment process. We added new language regarding sensitive habitats, special species, and environmental setting, added policies regarding the monarch butterfly, and we changed the title to Parks Open Space and Conservation. We added a variety of new implementation actions, much at the direction of council, View Corridor Study, a Williamson Act application, this was requested before the Planning Commission, establish density for the downtown-specific plan area, sidewalk standards, tree protection ordinance, tree master plan, and a biological mitigation measures from the final environmental impact report. I know there has been discussion before you in prior meetings, public comment for items in on the record regarding designating sites as parks at the will of the council. We cannot do that, that would be considered a regulatory takings, to declare a private property with that type of designation, so I'm using this opportunity here to express that. So all in all, Parks and Open Space and Conservation Element received the most additional policies and actions, as noted on the screen. The ones with the asterisk are taken directly from our final environmental impact report as mitigation measures, and it is heavily suggested that we do not touch those. Those are critical to the integrity of our environmental analysis, consistent with SEQA and state requirements and regulatory agencies, such as the State Department of Fish and Wildlife and other regulatory environmental agencies. So all in all, new policies and actions post-draft publication. We have three in our land use element, nine in economic development, four environmental justice, 16 in parks, nine from the EIR, three in public facilities, two in safety, and one in historic preservation. And I want to pause here and note that parks got the most, and that was really evidential and reflective of the amount of public comment we got. By the largest majority of comments we got in that four-month period were about environmentally sensitive habitat, biology, monarch butterflies, by a lot. So that really is reflective here in what we've done with that element of the general plan. Other changes resulting from some comments and mapping refinements, after conferring with LAFCO, surprise, our city limit actually extends into the ocean, three miles, as do the other two coastal cities in Ventura County. That required a little bit of a domino effect with mapping and figures in our general plan. We have a new land use designation map, resulting from shopping centers that changed designations, and I'll walk into that, or walk through that a little bit later. Truck route map requested by public comment, and a series of biological maps that were provided by our county partners and State Department of Fish and Wildlife. So other key general plan changes, our designated disadvantaged community analysis needed a refresh as there was a better, or not better, but a more current model of CalEnviron Screen. When the data was originally run, it was the 3.0 version, now it's the 4.0 version. So we ran that data just to have fresh figures in our element. It didn't change any of the policies or goals, but now we have current data in that element. We added the land acknowledgement that the council approved just a couple weeks ago, added definitions to policy terms at the request of council, corrected typos and syntax errors, and addressed City Council discussion points and feedback from the May sessions, which is included as Attachment E to your staff report, such as including the tree master plan, tree protection ordinance, request for Spanish materials and monolingual outreach, and other edits and refinements. So as part of those May discussion meetings, there was a lot of talk about how do we retain our primary grocers to the city, in light of a lot of state legislation coming down that says thou shall build housing where housing is allowed. And prior to that, we had a number of these centers that were designated as Neighborhood Center, which allows, I think, 40% of housing on those sites. After council direction to visit, what is the best land use designation to retain these shopping centers that have grocers? In conferring with our city attorney's office, it was determined that commercial is the best land use designation to retain these shopping centers with grocers. So we've made those changes. The ones with the asterisk were changed to commercial, they were either beforehand Neighborhood Center or mixed use. The first five, I believe, were already commercial. The one that's highlighted on the bottom is the Mission Plaza Shopping Center at the corner of Ventura Avenue and Main Street. This came up in Planning Commission. The last time the council saw this shopping center was in the context of the downtown-specific plan, a couple years ago. And there was much discussion about should that be Neighborhood Center, should it be specific plan designation, and at that time, let's do Neighborhood Center. Well, fast forward a year and a half later, new laws have come into play. Council asked for better direction on what's the best designation to really protect this. Here we are with commercial. The shopping center in Mission Plaza was, you know, compartmentalized within the context of DTSP. And after bringing that back after Planning Commission discussion and conferring with staff and our GP team, we recognized this really should be commercial as well, even in the, based on the evolution of dialogue before council on the additional research we've done. So we've included that shopping center as part of the shopping centers that have the commercial land use designation. We also have attached to the staff report a Housing Element Consistency Memo. We analyzed our progress towards meeting or achieving the regional housing needs allocation or RENA state mandate through built projects, or projects are in the pipeline. So we did a current temperature check, what we've had built, what's under construction, what's entitled, what's in the pipeline to become entitled, assessed it against our draft land use designations and related designations or densities to that, and determined that there is a sufficient capacity to accommodate RENA. So at this point, I'm going to turn it over to Matt Maddox with Rincon to talk about our final environmental impact report.
Thank you, Maruha. Madam Mayor, council members.
Good evening. Thank you, Maruha. Madam Mayor and council members, thank you for having me. Matt Maddox with Rincon Consultants, who was part of the general plan team and led the effort as part of the environmental impact report. My presentation is really to update you from the time that we met last, when you saw the draft EIR, and then to understand the final EIR components and where we stand today. So what is in the final environmental impact report? It contains the original draft EIR that was completed and that was available for public review. It contains all of the comments that were received during that 45-day public comment period, as well as responses to, written responses to each of those comments. Where necessary, it also includes revisions or edits to the draft EIR in response to those comments, or as it relates to some of the edits and updates that Maruha went through as part of the general plan public comment period as well. The final EIR also contains the findings and a statement of overriding consideration, which describes all the impact areas and how mitigation will intend to address or reduce those impacts, and where some of those impacts are still significant and unavoidable. The mitigation monitoring and reporting program, also known as an MMRP, is a requirement of any environmental impact report. It is the document that lives beyond the EIR for city staff to check and ensure that all mitigation which is proposed actually gets implemented during the time that actual construction or development may occur during the life of the general plan. And lastly, the resolution that is, that the City Council is certifying the EIR, adopting the MMRP and findings, and approving the project. That is all as part of the final EIR package. Next slide. So a little background on our EIR public comments that were received. Again, we had a public comment period that ran slightly behind the initial start of the public review of the general plan. It began on June 30th, and then we commenced the ending date for both of those comment periods on August 14th. Comments were received from a variety of state, local agencies, and individuals. We received 16 total written comments, four of them from agencies, and 12 individuals, with seven of those being unique commenters. Some folks submitted multiple comment letters. A little just taste of the comments that were received, there was a comment from our colleagues at the county about their NOP letter and making sure that that was included as part of the final document. The note about the Sphere of Influence acreage, that was a mapping change related to some of the changes related to the city and sphere of influence lines that we confirmed with LAFCO. There was a number of comments on biological resources, in particular, related to wildlife corridors and sensitive habitats, a clarification on the annexation areas that were considered as part of the general plan, some comments regarding open space, agriculture, buffers, and wetlands, a comment related to coastal resources, and then some clarifications related to water supply, infrastructure capacity, as well as some clarifications related to wildfire hazards. Next slide. As mentioned, one of the main comments we received, and we had some really great dialogue with both the county, as well as California Department of Fish and Wildlife, including a meeting with the CDFW staff who submitted the comment letter to make sure that we were on the same page in terms of the clarifications, edits, and updates. One of those areas was where stream zones, who has the authority on stream zones through lake and stream bed alteration agreements? They had some added information regarding ESHA, also known as environmental sensitive habitat areas. We added information regarding wildlife movement corridors throughout a variety of areas, including riparian areas, barankas, and abutting agriculture lands and open space. We did some map updates to open space areas as it relates to wildlife corridors. We had a clarification that biological resource assessments are required for federally and/or state-listed endangered and threatened species, and there were some revisions to some of the mitigation measures, including mitigation measure BIO 7 and BIO 8, and an added biological resource mitigation measure related to monarch butterflies, which is now biological mitigation measure number nine. A couple pieces related to land use. Edits clarified that the city's Sphere of Influence acreage, making sure that those numbers match what we confirmed with LAFCO. And we specified that five parcels, not three, are being considered for annexation, and another clarification is that those are not being proposed for annexation at this time, but we anticipate during the life of the general plan, they may be considered for annexation. They would have a separate process through LAFCO to go through an annexation. Annexation is not currently on the table. We are also, we also tried to work, we also noted that the ongoing local coastal program update is a separate process, and that a number of coastal resources, trail coordination, and views, which were comments that were received, will actually be addressed as part of that process, which will be coming later. A number of comments were received that we responded to that did not require any edits to the EIR analysis, but nevertheless were important and want to make note of, including comments related to protection of agriculture. We want to emphasize that there is no rezoning or land use changes of any agriculture parcels as part of the proposed general plan, and therefore impacts to those areas, there would be no impacts associated with that. If there were to be a future amendment to a land use designation, that would require its own discretionary review and its own SEQA process to determine that. Some comments related to wildfire hazards and risks. There were some very particular comments about specific sites and locations. At this point in time, we don't, at the programmatic level of the EIR, we don't get into those details, but there are a number of actions as part of the general plan and as part of the general plan EIR for future studies if those areas were to come up. One of those in particular is the City Community Wildfire Protection Plan, which is aimed at identifying fuel reduction projects. Those individual projects and that plan itself actually would also undergo its own SEQA process and determine if there are any impacts, and if there are impacts, appropriate EIR, general plan EIR mitigation measures may apply to those sites on a case-by-case basis. Lastly, there was a request for some clarification on the water supply and infrastructure capacity specific to the general plan. We just want to note one area, the draft EIR relies on the city's 2020 urban water management plan in discussions with city staff throughout the IR process. That is the most current source available. We kind of knew this going in, especially the timing getting to this point in the fall of 2025, that that process is also being updated. They will have the 2025 urban water management plan through the end of the year, but nevertheless, at the time of the publication of the draft EIR, we use the most current data available, and I just want to ensure that based on both the 2020 numbers, as well as the anticipated 2025 urban water management plan data, we are anticipated to have sufficient water supplies through the life of the general plan. Lastly, I want to just conclude with, there are a number of residual impacts, significant and unavoidable impacts, and as a result of that, before you, as part of your package, is a statement of overriding considerations, as part of the findings of fact. Those issue areas that were not, while mitigation was suggested and provided, weren't able to reduce to a less significant level include air quality, specifically related to construction and operational emissions, cultural resources as it relates to historic resources, cultural resources as it relates to archaeological resources, and lastly, construction noise and traffic noise, all of which have mitigation measures built within them, and as well as a number of policies in the general plan, but due to a number of factors, we were not able to determine that those impacts can be reduced to a less significant level, and therefore have a finding of significant.
Maruha?
Thank you, Matt. So some concluding comments. Since publication last week of the final general plan packet, I wanted to touch on some themes we've seen through the public comment. One we mentioned earlier in the presentation, land use policy LU-6.2, that was revised by the Planning Commission. We've received, probably, that was the prominent comment that we received, and so, as aforementioned, we have that original language, the Planning Commission language, and some suggested refinement to help spear some dialogue, if that's at the request of council. The second theme we have heard was regarding the removal of the Environmental Justice Policy, EJ 9.3, or Tenant Protections, and EJA 8.10, and the Anti-Displacement Plan. These have been in the draft, and we hadn't had any public comment on these two elements since the publication of the City Council packet. As the council is aware, we have been pursuing Program 23 of our Certified Housing Element called Tenant Protections. We started this effort probably a little over a year ago, and have had various items that we are chipping away at, two of which will come before you on November 18th. So we are well underway with this effort. The housing element is part of the general plan, and even though it's on a separate track because it has an eight-year life cycle, it is a chapter of the general plan. And so with that, as with other chapters or elements, there is a correlation between the elements and chapters that speak to different themes. These languages are suggestive, or the policies suggestive in that we could explore, study. There are no mandates with these two, but really, it's a policy direction at the council at this point. The Anti-Displacement Plan is a midterm action, which means we would begin looking at that in 2030 at the earliest. And important to note that, you know, in future years or another decade, that might be something that the council at that time would like to look at or change. Again, a living document can move with the city, but again, this request is at a discretion of the council. The third is biology, very, very, I guess, a general term, but a couple layers within it. The bio policy one through nine from our final environmental impact report have been combined as policies in our Parks Open Space and Conservation Element. We can't touch those without going back to our environmental impact document and needing to do a recirculation. That would be a significant and unavoidable impact, which you just heard from Mr. Maddox talking about the four that we have. Those were done in consult with the Department of Fish and Wildlife, the county, and other environmental agencies. We had a number of other policies added that we actually struck prior to the publication meeting because we didn't want to get ahead of state law, we didn't want to preempt state law, and we were looking for more implementation guidance regarding these forthcoming laws to then potentially look at updating the general plan at that time. There were some requests for mapping refinements. Those maps that we have were from the state and the county. We do not have control over those maps. The private property owner, or any property owner that believes they have an additional baseline can provide that data to the Department of Fish and Wildlife, and the city will be at the table with them to have that discussion, but that effort needs to be led by the property owner, and when it crosses over into the county, the county would be at that table as well. We cannot initiate changing those maps. Those maps are not ours to change. There was also the request for additional monarch butterfly policies. We feel we've done quite a bit with our Parks Open Space and Conservation Element and the policies we have in there. We use the backbone of the Xerces Society, which is the known regulatory authority for monarch butterflies. We base those surveys and roosting on those sites that they have identified. You know, just, we can't just see a butterfly in one tree and automatically that's an aggregation site. We had to put bookends on that, and we feel confident with having that as a backbone for our roosting survey requirements. for our roosting survey requirements, in addition to the language that Planning Commission offered to help really focus that requirement on new development that's going on to vacant land. The next one, we have a request from the Autism Society of Ventura County with a number of editorial refinements to expand representation of that demographic. All can be done, making the document stronger. The one land use action that they wanted to potentially explore or eliminate would be the drive-through ban implementation action, which is LU 8.24, citing concerns about drive-through pharmacies, drive-through banks. So, we have some suggested language should the council desire to consider refining that in response to that public feedback. We also received some comments this morning regarding item two under Land Use Action 13, which speaks to exploring a height study for the promenade parking structure. That has been in the document since inception and was discussed in April 2023 at the Economic Subcommittee Meeting. That is not a new item, and we hadn't received any comments on that item until just this morning. It's important to underscore that none of the comment letters received identify any new environmental impacts that were not analyzed in our environmental impact report. Other public comment that I wanted to point out that we just got today, referencing a former version of PFS 10.2, which was struck actually in the addendum. PFS 10.2 is now Water Distribution System and Efficiency. The comment letter referred to the older language of new development, and that was struck with the publication of the original draft. Similarly, PFS 10.10 is no longer existing in our document. That was also struck with the draft. So, you can see Attachment G in Page 45, as those policies are no longer included. So, with every request before council, we look at what strategic priority we are hitting with the ask, and frankly, the general plan hits all of them. We're supporting all of the City Council's strategic priorities and the connected focus areas. The general plan supports climate change and environmental stewardship, economic vitality and development, addresses homelessness by supporting provision of housing, prioritizing infrastructure, and public safety. So with that, your recommendation this evening, adopt a resolution, as on the screen, to certify the environmental impact report, after which we would ask for your adoption of the City of San Buenaventura 2050 General Plan. And that concludes my presentation, and we're available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Appreciate your presentation. I will bring it to council for any questions or introductory remarks. You can let me know if you want to touch on this, or do we want to take public comment first?
I have one.
Or do you have a question?
Not really a question, and I'm going to let Deputy Mayor Halter take the lead on this one, but I think we served on the General Plan Advisory Committee for the last five years, and I don't know if you want to say something for some of the people that are here.
Just, and as Councilmember McReynolds just stated, is that it was quite an endeavor, five years, 33 meetings, a lot of discussion. I think it wouldn't be near this well-written if it wasn't for all the volunteers that came forward to participate, and with the help of Romney and with staff, our consultant, and staff doing all they can to make sure that this was efficiently worked through and that we looked at every point. It's quite amazing what it takes to do a general plan that is absolutely our vision for the future of the city, and there's a lot of, there's always going to be some room for growth. I have a few questions as we move into it, but I truly want to hear the public comment first and leave a lot of time for that. But I do want to thank everybody who served on that committee for all those years. Truly, that was quite a sacrifice and quite a commitment, so really appreciated that community outreach and that involvement, and I hope you all stay involved and help make this a reality, our general plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I think council wants to hear from the public first. So, Mr. City Clerk, do we have public comments on this?
Thank you, Mayor. We have 21 speakers submitted for the general plan. Per our council protocols, 21 speakers and more brings the speaking time to two minutes.
Two minutes.
So, speakers will have two minutes. And just give us one second while we pull up the screen. Our first speaker this evening is Casey Rodriguez, followed by Kathleen Wheeler, Mike Burns,
Let me see if I can rearrange what I was going to say. First, I know I want to thank all the people who volunteered on this project. I know it was much longer than what you guys signed up for, and that dedication is admired. As we embark on this narrow journey with the Schumash Land Acknowledgement, I would like to highlight, this is a vital aspect where we can show the collaboration with the city and Schumash culture with highlighting imagery options throughout the packet. Veering more than halfway of this packet, I see a lack of Schumash culture being represented. May we remember, Schumash culture is the first culture of this city before this city. So, I believe a few photos celebrating that, honoring that is not too much to ask. We have options here as the op, that is, the house at Museum of Ventura County. We also have a local to mall, Plank Canoe, that is at Vita Arts. And I would also like to highlight that this land acknowledgement should be giving everyone the personal obligation to become better land stewards. We have the obligation and the joy to wake up every day in paradise, and that is because the Schumash people, my ancestors, took land stewardship very seriously. It was a committed act we did on a daily basis. I feel this should be emphasis on the mission statement, vision statement, and under the curve value, may we never take advantage of the fact that we get to live in such a beautiful place. I also would like to thank everyone. That's all I can think of right now with my time. I'm not sure where I'm at right now, and I just want to just emphasize the importance of having this general packet show the beauty of truly collaboration with the city and Schumash culture, and looking for ways to update it more to show that. Thank you.
Kathleen Wheeler, followed by Mike Burns, Stephanie Caldwell, Von.
Good evening. A lot of hard work by a lot of people went into both the general plan and the CARP. Thank you. Maruha's presentation reinforced for me the belief that there is the will on your part to continually improve the plan as it's being implemented, and in that spirit, I'd like to suggest three questions to regularly evaluate together to determine how the city's doing in keeping this a living and relevant plan. Number one, sense of urgency. Is there sufficient sense of urgency reflected in the plan that is commensurate with the reality of what's happening? Could a more explicit statement be in the vision statement, such as, "We recognize the urgency of the climate crisis, and we're intentional about both adapting to and mitigating its impacts"? Number two, acting in concert. Are actions in every department being taken in coordination with each other and in the service of a sustainable future? Are the related departments working together with environmental sustainability? Number three, accelerating the transition. We're in a significant historic transition. We need to honor what the oil and gas industry has done for us in the past and embrace the current reality that this transition must happen if we're going to have a sustainable future at all. The cities, are the city's actions helping or delaying the transition to sustainability? Ventura is behind other cities in the county, not in all ways, but in terms of how opportunities to act on climate are seized or left to wither and disappear. We know that the general plan can be a living document with your leadership. Honestly, thinking about the questions like these in a way that, is a way that you can provide that leadership. Thank you.
Mike Burns, Stephanie Caldwell. Vahan Nahabedian.
Good evening, council. Resident here for forty-some-odd years. I will say, there is concern to me, only learning about the work that this council has done in the last two weeks, I say that your outreach to the citizens of this city has fallen short. Every person that I've talked to since learning about the general plan has never heard of what you guys are actually planning on doing. I think you guys need to take a stop and actually outreach to your guys' citizens about what the general plan is actually going to be doing. It is going to be a large facelift for this city, and I think if you actually were able to reach out and talk to people, most of them would be here today. We wouldn't be having open seats at all. In that sense, after reading the general plan, looking at it, it sounds more like a business plan and building up a business, and less of building up a community. I think you guys need to hold off on voting on this and actually reach out to your constituents. Thank you.
Stephanie Caldwell, followed by Vahan Nahabedian, Luis Lampara, Don Durazo.
I have a few concerns. I had emailed all of you today some of the specific policies in the general plan that we believe are inconsistent with prior council direction and could have serious unintended consequences for our business community and broader economic vitality. LU 6.2, the original language rightly placed the responsibility for buffering on large-scale residential projects adjacent to industrial zones. Please revert to the G-PAC's original recommended policy language. On PFS 1.11, we urge council to clarify what is meant by fair share and other mechanisms. Are we talking about grants, new development fees? If new fees are being considered, we need transparency and stakeholder input to ensure fairness and feasibility. This language is vague and sounds eerily like Net 02.0, something this council unanimously voted to rescind, and that decision should be respected. LU 6.7 and LU 15.14 call for the continuation of efficient and transparent permitting process for commercial and residential projects. Despite the fact that there are still council-approved recommendations through the Matrix Report, the Grand Jury Report, and council policy considerations that have yet to be implemented, we must endeavor for continual improvement. Finally, the Wildlife Corridor map does not reflect the current Levis Park Drive Extension and Levy Project, a project already under construction with significant public and private investment. Including outdated or unvetted data risks undermining years of planning and jeopardizing critical economic development. We urge council to align the general plan with prior decisions, ensure clarity and feasibility in policy language, and protect Ventura's economic future by supporting a more balanced approach. Thank you.
Von Nahabedian, Luis Lampara, Don Durazo, Kristen Kessler, Janet Sprissler.
Good evening, Honorable Councilmembers. My name is Bahagan Nahabedian. On behalf of Numeric Solutions and the Wood Clissons Foundation, I'd like to thank everyone for the hard work that has gone into the general plan, but I must say that as we approach the finish line, I had a sense that the project was being rushed, and I'm sure I'm not alone. We've submitted numerous letters and emails, but many issues remain unaddressed, including errors on the mapping that was used by the city. We actually received a response that correcting a map would be a deviation from California Department of Fish and Wildlife dataset for the city of Ventura area. As we've seen on the Ventura River adjudication, the state and CDFW's knowledge of local conditions is at best cursory and often based on assumptions. Basing local policy on someone else's interpretation of local conditions isn't advisable. Numerous revisions and responses to the EIR were released on September 19th. Collectively, these will have a negative impact on agriculture and industry within the city. These last-minute changes cause the loss of public confidence, confusion, and irritation. We urge you to follow COLAB's suggestion to restore the original language of LU 6.2 to protect our businesses, clarifying the overly broad definitions of development and projects, so trivial matters, routine maintenance, and agricultural operations do not fall under their definitions, reinstate ED 1.2 as a core economic policy to protect and expand industrial jobs, direct staff to amend the MMRP to remove measures that exceed state and federal law. In closing, I'd like to urge you to explore the feasibility of the Williamson Act, POS 8.22, at the soonest opportunity rather than delay. Thank you, and please consider resolution of these issues prior to adoption of the general plan. Thank you.
Luis Lampara, followed by Don Durazo, Kristen Kessler, Janet Sprissler, Wendy Souter.
Luis Lampara of Ventura County COLAB. I'll focus on two points tonight. First, the biological measures. Steph just informed you that council cannot change the MMRP because it's part of the EIR, and that policies Bio 1 through 9 simply mirror state law. Neither of these claims is correct or accurate. Under SEQA Guidelines 15091 and 15097, you, the City Council, are the lead agency. You, not staff, not the consultant, decide which mitigation measures to adopt, refine, edit, or narrow, as long as you put your reasoning on the record. That is not violating SEQA. That is SEQA. Furthermore, recirculation of an EIR is only required when there is, quote, "significant new information" under SEQA Section 15088.5. Clarifying a measure to align with state law or tightening one that lacks substantial evidence in the record does not meet that recirculation threshold. Significant case law supports this fact. And these measures go far beyond what state or federal law actually requires. For example, Bio 1 applies a 500-foot biological survey radius. That comes from CDFW Raptor Guidance Only. Ventura has applied this 500-foot radius to all species, far in excess of state and federal law. If the city's intent is to follow state law, the language should say exactly that, consistent with applicable state and federal protocols. Second, on policy LU 6.2, industrial compatibility. The Planning Commission changed the phrase "large-scale residential projects" to "new projects." That sounds like a minor edit, but it is not. It shifts the burden for buffers and setbacks from new housing developments to existing industrial businesses, meaning even a simple equipment upgrade could now trigger new buffers and setback requirements. Thank you.
Don Durazo, Kristen Kessler.
Good evening, mayor and councilmembers. My name is Don Durazo, and I'm the Treasurer of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. Please respect the process the council and the community already completed, and remove EJ 9.3 and EJA 10. The city already spent eighteen months evaluating these issues, hearing from renters, homeowners, and housing providers. The council made the right decision on May 27th, approving a balanced plan that expands tenant education and legal services, that creates a strong anti-harassment ordinance, and provides limited relocation assistance where it is truly needed. Revisiting this through the environmental justice element undermines that thoughtful process and adds cost that makes housing harder to provide. Housing policy belongs in land use element, where the focus should be on solutions that expand supply by streamlining approvals, reducing costs, and supporting programs that help families buy homes. Please respect the process, stay on course, and keep Ventura focused on policies that create housing opportunities. Thank you.
Kristen Kessler, followed by Janet Sprissler and Wendy Souter.
Good evening, council. I have three comments and suggestions for you. The first one is, I would like to encourage you to include a mature tree ordinance in the general plan. We all know that mature trees are being felled in our city, and we need our trees for many reasons, so I encourage you to include that in the plan. The second comment I have is regarding Land Use Implementation Action 24, which is conducting a study on the drive-through ban. I think this is a very important goal and could only have positive repercussions for our community, and I'm only referring to fast food drive-throughs when I'm talking about this. Reducing drive-throughs would encourage healthier eating choices and would reduce air pollution from idling vehicles, and perhaps most importantly, it would be a very positive step in keeping fast food establishments out of disadvantaged communities such as Saticoy, which already have high pollution burdens and limited fresh food options. I also encourage you to do whatever you can to make sure that this study gets done. My next comment is regarding the noise element. I think it's wonderful that there is a noise element in the plan. As we all know, noise pollution is a major problem in our society. The threshold of 85 decibels is appropriate- The threshold of 85 decibels is appropriate, as anything above that is damaging to hearing. I would like to suggest adding another component to the noise element. The use of electric lawn equipment in our parks would make sure that the 85-decibel noise level is not exceeded. As you're probably aware, most leaf blowers and weed trimmers exceed 85 decibels. They can be anywhere from 90 to 115. Electric versions of these, both of these, are around 65 decibels. This would also further the goal of reducing greenhouse gases and would improve worker respiratory health, and funding is available through the county to purchase electric lawn equipment. Finally...
Thank you.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you.
Next speaker is Janet Sprissler, followed by Wendy Souter and Bob Guthrie.
Good evening. Thank you, Mayor and Council Members. I'm Janet Sprissler with Rent 805. I am a property manager and a broker-owner here in Ventura, as well as a member of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. I manage and consult with small property owners, which is four units or less. They are service members, they're teachers, they're retired folks in our area. They care about their residents, and they care about the neighborhoods they live in. They are struggling with insurance, requirements by the city, maintenance costs, and have more burdens starting on January 1st with newly adopted assembly bills. Over the last 18 months, city council has worked hard to find a balance between owners and renters. You've heard from residents, tenants, landlords, and community groups. You made the right call on May 27th. And we thank you for that, by the way. The package you passed expanded education, legal services, added anti-harassment, all part of being a responsible, community-driven solution. Adding new members, or measures now through the environmental justice element ignores that process. Respect the time of the community that has already invested by keeping the housing policy where it belongs, in land use element. Thank you for listening, and continue to seek balances between local solutions that protects renters and preserves the small housing provider that Ventura so desperately needs. Thank you.
Next speaker is Wendy Souter. Wendy, you've been seated time. You'll have four minutes.
Good evening. I'm concerned that at tonight's final meeting of the general plan, tucked away on page 90, are two changes to the downtown-specific plan that have major impact potential. Now, I heard tonight that it's been stated that it's been on the document for some time. I only saw it today in a search. So the two items that I'm very concerned about, again tucked away on page 90 under LU A.13, are the first item number two. Quote, "Explore increasing the maximum allowable height of the public parking garage adjacent to the pier to support expanded tourism amenities." I request you pull this item from the general plan for the following key reason. The general plan excluding item two and four took five years to complete. It includes input from the residents of the community and also approval by the Planning Commission, as you know. Yet here we are tonight, making a change that would impact our beloved Promenade area and doing it by burying it deep in the document. As far as I'm aware, this was never endorsed or recommended by the G-PAC or the Planning Commission. What about public input? I understand the language says "explore," not "change," but this seems a very non-transparent way to insert what I consider an 11th-hour idea. A couple of weeks ago, there was an economic development meeting where conceptual drawings were shown of hotels that greatly exceeded the zoning. The room was packed, and the common theme was outrage at the proposed eight- and 10-story hotels that were shown. This is not a project that our citizens are looking for or asking for. Our waterfront and the views of the ocean and hillsides are what define Ventura. Why would we want to give that away? We don't need or want to be waikeke. Why not explore options that can fit into the current zoning? I'm sure that the public can come up with far better ideas if you would let them. Please pull item two and instead engage in a separate process with transparency. The second item that I'm concerned about, again under LU A.13, is number four. Add minimum and maximum densities to the specific zoning districts based on the densities of projects already built under the specific plan. I understand that the DTSP is a form-based code, yet given the latitude the density bonus affords, it makes sense to define an upper limit. However, there was limited or no discussion of this with the G-PAC. Getting the number right and not including density bonus buildings is very important and should be fully, should be developed in a fully transparent manner as well. So I'm asking you to please pull items two and four and let the public have more input than we, I feel that we've had at this point. Thank you for your consideration and for your time.
Next speaker is Bob Guthrie.
First, I just wanted to say that I think it's a good general plan, and it's absolutely incredible how much work has gone into putting it together. I don't want to sound like a broken record based on what the last speaker said, but I'm also going to talk about items two and item four, which received one sentence each on page 90 of the plan. And again, this is going to be a little reiteration based on what Wendy just said, but item two reads as, "Explore increasing the maximum height in the harbor parking garage." That's not Ventura Harbor; that's the pier parking garage. So I have to admit, that parking garage is a bit of a mess, but I don't think this objective belongs in the general plan. The reason for that is by the very nature that it says "explore increasing the maximum height." That says you've already predetermined that we need to go taller. That's not necessarily the case. I've heard it stated that, right now, the parking structure is four stories of parking. Therefore, we'd need to do anything more than just parking; we'd need to go up more than the four stories. Well, the harbor parking structure only occupies about a third of the space that's down there. Adjacent to it, occupying two-thirds of the space, is a ground-level parking. So if you average those two spaces together with the existing park, and it works out to about two stories. So I'm not saying that we don't have to go taller, but I'm just saying it shouldn't be predetermined that we have to go taller. I really think that if you're going to leave that objective in there, it ought to read something like, "Explore revitalizing the area in and around the harbor parking structure." I think that's really what we're trying to do. We're in agreement that the parking structure needs work; it's a mess. But what we want to do is make that area better and revitalize it. So I'd just suggest, if you can leave that objective in, rewarding it to really get at what we're trying to get at. The last one is item four, and this is establishing the lower and the upper limits for dwelling units per acre in the downtown-specific plan. That definitely needs to be done. In a form-based code area, state law reverts to...
Thank you. Our next speaker is Natalie Bruton. Natalie, you've been seated time. You'll have four minutes.
All right. Good evening. Good evening, Mayor, City Council Members, City Attorney, Clerk, and Staff. As we all agree, creation of the updated general plan is a Herculean effort. This project is of vital importance to our city, and this has been a combined effort by the G-PAC members, community members, staff, and guided by the consultant thousands of hours. All this effort was by committed individuals who truly believed in the process. So when the process appears to be usurped, it is a slap in the face of all those who took part in or followed this very long, complicated process. I wish to bring forward a significant issue and concern with the most recent revision, in particular, the changes to the goals regarding the DTSP, pier and pier parking structure. So let's go a little back in time, back in May 13, 14, and 50, and a review was done with an update conducted. I would like to point out that in particular, Chapter Eight, Parks and Open Space, now which also adds conservation, within that general plan had no mention of changes to the DTSP or pier structure. For reference, page 16 of that document of 38, paragraph two, talked about improvements and stewardship. And POS 5.4 expanded on the access; nothing more added. On May 28th, the Planning Commission, again focusing on Chapter Eight, nothing about the DTSP or pier structure was discussed. Then on September 24th, council meeting, although the attachments was for the April G Plan, it would be really helpful if the consultant put on every revision the actual date of its issuance, because it became very complicated trying to figure out. So on each page, not on the beginning, but on every page. So no updates or changes were made to the DTSP or the pier parking. So those prior visions, now we are at October 21st. So let's start with some good stuff. The additions that are helpful are the LU 20, 21, 20, the freeway cap, the C-word, which were already there, the sidewalk standards, which are incredibly important, the view corridor, and the drive-through ban. The view corridor is of vital importance, but the key is, you got to do it before you start a development. You can't develop something and then say, "Oh, what about the view corridor?" So now let's get to the part that's causing great grief. I clearly recall there was a commitment made that the DPSB was to be kept intact with no significant changes. If you look at what was mentioned by Ms. Souter and Mr. Guthrie, LU 24 talks about modifications of the downtown-specific plan. If you go even further, let's dig a little deeper, and you go to page 90, which we discussed LU A.13, item two and item four. As they were read, one discusses exploring maximum height, increasing the height of the pier parking, and the other one talks about changing the heights with buildings within the DTSP. These are a big surprise and appears to have been dropped in without G-PAC or citizen input. Where do these changes and add-ons come from? They are significant and are in direct conflict with the DTSP and what we are aware of. If these two changes had been put forward to the public in the G-PAC, as you've noticed with the pier parking, these would be, there'd be an outcry of dissent. These must be removed prior to approval. If not, this would be the slap of all slaps in the face of every single person who has been part of this process. If the council or someone can just drop in such a controversial statement, it goes against every aspect of how to manage this process. This is a critical document which needs more review, and citizens, our citizens are brilliant, as you've heard tonight. They have put forth valuable information. Please listen to us.
Thank you.
Please do not approve the current version. Make these adjustments. Thank you.
Dana Warsnop, followed by Carba Eckley, Dave Scott, Grant Leifus, Amy Cherry, Spencer Noran.
Hello, council and everyone. I am Dana Warsnop. I was a member of the General Plan Advisory Committee, and it was hard and satisfying work, and I thank you all for all of the work you did in all of that. I want to speak tonight to two dynamic tensions that are probably never completely resolvable in cities. And one of them is that Ventura is a medium-sized city with a small-town feeling. And an overarching priority of the G-PAC was to try to maintain a sense of community, connection, and familiarity in what is actually a city. And we talked about the concept of the 15-minute city, which may be hard to do in, given the current infrastructure. And that, I just want to say, is one of the reasons for the land use designation of town center. And we did not realize when we were talking about that, that that could actually endanger the existence of grocery stores, which is just absolutely clearly a no-go. And if that is so, then bring it back to the designation of commercial. But I also want to encourage you to keep that sense of neighborhood feeling, residential and commercial mixed, within all the codes and regulations. And so when revisiting the general plan, think about that. It's pretty hard to put that into the little code specifics and the LU dash number places all the way through. But that is something that we would love for the city to continue to feel like a community. And the second is also related, and I'm going to run out of time, but it's how we increase the housing supply, especially for truly affordable housing, while also addressing the resistance to densities and heights, because I'm not certain how those ever get fully resolved. We need both, and I don't envy you that. But I'd like to, one thought that occurred to me was about aesthetics. If we have beautiful, big buildings, that might not, it might feel better.
Thank you.
And I'm done. Thank you.
Carba Eckley, followed by Dave Scott, Grant Leifus.
I heard people like it when I throw down the document on the plan, the thick plan on the podium like that. I'm Carba Eckley. I was on the General Plan Advisory Committee as well. It was quite a journey. I am, I have so much more love and respect for this city after having gone through this process. I'm proud of myself and all of us for sticking with it. There were times where I knew I wanted to quit. But I'll just say, I'm super appreciative of staff to responding to every comment, making changes where they were needed, adding things like the Monarch Overwintering Sites, just really, you know, again and again, like, listening to the community and a theme of listening to the community when they showed up and spoke to the general plan. I hope we continue to do that tonight when we kind of tie this up. One thing I'll say, I think I'm still a little disappointed in our inability to really expand parks and open spaces, but I will say, over the next 25 years, when a developer comes and wants to look at a SOAR development, I will remind everyone and ourselves of the thousands of residential units that we identified in the general plan. So we clearly have enough opportunities in this city and fill and what has been identified here that we can preserve all of those spaces and not develop them. And then lastly, I'll just say, I do think one of the coolest and most powerful part of this whole process is all the maps. I've said it before, but I think when this is all said and done, if we can have all those kind of ArcGIS interactive maps available to residents, so they can really zoom in to their individual parcels, parcels on all the maps that have been offered, I think that would be really cool, since there really are so many, and they're really powerful tools for folks. So thanks again. It's been a journey, and I hope it ends.
Dave Scott.
Good evening, Mayor, Council Members. This is a great process. It's fantastic to be just a very, very small part of this. I represent the property owner at 760 South C-Ward. I respectfully request that the City of Ventura City Council consider including multifamily residential uses within the Commerce Technology Office CTO zoning designation as part of the upcoming general plan update. As you know, Ventura faces a growing need for diverse housing options that are affordable and accessible to residents of varying income levels. Incorporating multifamily residential uses into CTO districts would advance several important city goals. Housing availability, expanding allowable residential uses in CTO zones will help address Ventura's ongoing housing shortage by creating opportunities for more units, including affordable and workforce housing. Smart growth and sustainability, allowing housing in CTO areas would encourage mixed-use development, reduce reliance on long commutes, and make better use of existing infrastructure. Vibrant communities. Integrating residential development with commerce and technology uses can create dynamic neighborhoods, strengthen the local economy, and support small businesses with a larger resident base nearby. Other cities in California have already taken steps to encourage greater housing flexibility through zoning reform, and Ventura has the opportunity to do the same. Expanding CTO zoning to include multifamily residential and mixed-use development would create a forward-looking framework that balancing, that balances economic growth, housing needs, and sustainability. We urge the city council to study and incorporate this change into the general plan update, ensuring Ventura remains a welcoming, affordable, and thriving community. ensuring Ventura remains a welcoming, affordable, and thriving community for current and future generations. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Grant, followed by Amy Cherry and Spencer Noren.
Good evening, council. My name is Grant Lightfuss. I'm a Ventura resident, as well as a member of the Ventura County Coastal Association of Realtors. I'll keep this brief. I don't want this to be a long night. I'm here to echo my colleagues' comments regarding tenant protections in the general plan, specifically EJ nine-point-three, and respectfully request that the council removes this from the plan and leave housing policy to the land use element. Thank you so much, and have a good night.
Amy Cherry.
Amy, we'll pull up your slides now. I'll have the timer over here. Sure.
Good evening, council members, Mr. City Attorney, City Manager, and Michael, staff. It has been a long night, and I'm going to focus on the seaward corridor and Pierpont area and try to make it fast. I would like to, I'm sure it was an oversight, but LU twenty-three-point-four says it will protect public views when feasible. And the coastal act actually says, protect ocean views and restore degraded views when feasible. So it's missing that, restore the degraded views when feasible. Next, gonna just show some pictures. Things to consider when making motions tonight. Make it a goal for dedicated bike and pedestrian overpass toward the seaward corridor to separate it from the seaward traffic, which will be crazy. Protect all remaining monarch overwintering sites. It would be a boon for tourism. CTO and the commercial and the coastal zone should have a thirty-five-foot max, which is still an increase of five feet. So you gotta have a fifteen-foot first floor and two ten-foot floors. Increasing it to forty-five feet will block all the views. And I know it says study view corridors in the seaward corridor, but seaward goes like that. So, and you'll see those. Keep the credit union flex three, it's a light industrial, attract the high-end employers. Make it coastal act compliant and create a seaward corridor plan. Next. That's the tiny sliver of ocean that's left from Alessandro, and if you increase the height to forty-five feet, that will all be gone. Next.
Thank you.
Please.
Next speaker is Spencer Noren, followed by Chris Ament, and our final speaker, Elizabeth R.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. Good evening, Mayor, council, VPD, and translation in the back. I want to give a quick note here by saying thank you to staff and all the volunteers that went through this process. I've been here since the beginning, and I'm happy to be here now as well. I want to also give a big shout-out to my Parks and Rec staff, started by Mrs. Zerazua, and the tireless attempt I know that they've done in this general plan, most highlighted by my tree planner program that I'm seeing in the possible future, along with tree ordinances, more tree master plan, and the butterfly, monarch butterfly preservation. I know that was a hard stretch to put extra work in. Thank you. I also wanted to remind council of discussion we had in our last general plan meeting about preserving commercial spaces in our city, especially on the east side of Ventura and midtown. We discussed not only the commercial areas that have grocery stores, but also ones currently in the section we're at right now, on Ashwood and Telegraph, and also on Day and Telegraph. Council, we discussed this before last time, I believe, directing staff to make them commercial spaces, when the whole neighborhood center versus commercial was in discussion. And when I went back to the map recently, I saw that the other places were red, but these were still mixed-use. Can you please look at that now and make that change tonight, before we move forward, preserving commercial space on Telegraph Road, which we know a lot of housing is coming? College area, across the street, Methodist Church, different areas, possibly the churches on Telegraph Road, making sure we have amenities for commercial in this college space on the east side of Ventura. That'd be much appreciated. And I also want to back up. Other speakers signed about the Planning Commission motion that was made about the industrial area, and go back to the original G-PAC recommendation, please, and preserve our good, high-paying jobs from what we know is our strength in the eight-oh-five in Ventura, agriculture, and oil. Thank you so much.
Chris Ament.
Back in the right spot this time, hopefully. Sorry, rookie move. Chris Ament, native Monarchs. I want to sincerely thank you for listening to some of my recommendations, some of the recommendations of experts, and making stronger conservation measures for saving the monarch butterfly and their overwintering sites in the eucalyptus groves. But I don't want to assume that this is just a magic bullet, and that will be just fixed once this is approved. This is a really important measure, not just for Ventura, but for every coastal California city that has a monarch overwintering site and that they're losing. The super generation is coming right now. We're starting to see them arrive. And eucalyptus trees are not just habitat, but they are life support for a species on the brink of collapse. All it takes is one department, one developer, or one landscape crew to say, whoops, we didn't know, and cut down or severely prune these trees, and by then it's too late. The damage can't be, cannot be undone. And this has happened in different spots where I've submitted photos before. Mitigation after destruction is not protection, and that's gonna be kind of the key takeaway. The city and the county of Ventura should make it clear that such losses won't be tolerated, especially with the upcoming threatened species under the Endangered Species Act that announcement may come in December of 2025. I'm hoping the general plan is something we can be proud of, and future generations can look back and say they cared enough to save the trees that kept the monarchs alive. Finally, as far as my public service announcement, and anybody can do this, is that working with Xerces as a conservation partner, you can see every overwintering site in California on their site, on an overwintering map on Xerces, under the westernmonarchcount.org. You can also report damages or threats to trees at that same site, under westernmonarchcount.org. And on a positive note, if you see new clusters that are around, you can email Xerces as well. Thank you.
And our final speaker this evening is Elizabeth R., joining us virtually. Elizabeth, give us one second.
Thank you. My name is Elizabeth Reed Wainsco, and I'm speaking on behalf of the Center for Biological Diversity. The Center supports the overarching goals of the plan. However, we are concerned about the definition analyses and limited policy language, particularly regarding impacts to special status species and wildlife connectivity. Specifically, the FEIR failed to adequately describe, assess, and mitigate impacts to the region's mountain lion population and wildlife connectivity more broadly. Mountain lions are a candidate species provisionally listed as threatened under the California Endangered Species Act, but there's almost no mention of mountain lions in the FEIR despite their known occurrence within the plan area. Additionally, the plan allows for new development in and immediately adjacent to suitable living and move-through habitat for a wide variety of special status and sensitive species, but the FEIR does not sufficiently mitigate these impacts. The plan must be minded to include policies that more accurately reflect, protect, and enhance existing wildlife connectivity, and the FEIR must be improved to adequately assess and mitigate the plan's impacts to candidate species, wildlife movement, and habitat connectivity. Thank you for your time and consideration.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you, and thank you to all the individuals who came and spoke tonight. I'll bring it back to council for continued questions and any other comments you might want to have. Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor, and thank you so much for everything. All you, all you've done in all the meetings that you've had with us, and briefing us and everything else. So a couple, couple questions regarding what Mr. Noren was talking about, because I remember that meeting that we talked about Day and Telegraph, as well as Ashwood and Telegraph. I remember having the meeting. I remember making that recommendation. I remember the thumbs going up. And I didn't pay any attention to that later on, but we had said we wanted that commercial. I'm just wondering how that ended up getting changed back to what it is now? And if there was a reason that it got changed back to commercial, or not to commercial, that was changed from commercial?
So with the request about shopping centers and the need to retain those with grocers that should be changed to commercial, we liked all shopping centers in that context. And those that did not have a primary grocer, we left as-is. With the Ashwood and Telegraph site, it has a CVS, so we left that as-is, as well as the Day Road right here on the corner is a Starbucks, there's a primary grocer, so we left that as-is.
So I'm wondering, council direction was to make that commercial, so I'm wondering why we left it, why it was left the way it is? Why you changed it back? Because we, we had all agreed that we wanted to go commercial on those two sites in particular.
I don't recall when that was noted. I'm gonna lean to Matt Ramey to see if he can recall when that discussion was.
It was, it was a very long night. We were, we were discussing a lot, remember that?
Our recollection, even going back through the notes, was that it was actually gonna stay as, as mixed-use for that, so, and, but I would say that if there is a direction this evening to change it to commercial, now's the time to do that.
Yeah, okay. Thank you. And, are we in a timer, Michael? Okay, well, then I'll just go a couple, and then I'll pass it on. The other one I wanted to find out from you in regards to LU six-point-two, the, the new language changed by the Planning Commission was required that new projects that would result in residential uses located, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. My question is, can you, would you please define what a project is?
So that's, sorry. So that's a good question. The intent behind the policy was to address projects that were significant or discretionary that would require entitlement before a director permit or director hearing or the Planning Commission, a discretionary approval. It wasn't intended to address maintenance such as a re-roof or a water heater replacement or electrical work. It was physical development that would change the site, that would more than likely require a discretionary permit, either through a use permit, if that operation has one, to amend that, or if it's in the manufactured planned development zone, a planned development permit, which would be subject to approval. So that was, that's the intent behind the policy. Acknowledging that is a vague term, we do have some suggested language, as we noted earlier, for our council to consider.
Thank you. I look forward to that language, just because looking up, project is just about anything, and so that, that's great. I'm glad you have language. I'll go ahead and turn it over back to you. I'll come back later.
Okay, thank you. I'm gonna go to Councilmember Campos, and then Councilmember Manganay, and then Deputy Mayor Halter.
So I would also like to ask for a little clarification on the LU six-point-two. Is that directed at all existing businesses, or only, and residential, or new construction, new businesses and residential, part one? And part two, will it cause businesses to leave and a loss of jobs?
The first question is that it, the intent behind the policy is new. Anything new that comes on deck adjacent to an existing operator would have to adjust their site, their development, what they're proposing, to include any buffers or setbacks required by way of the neighboring operation, to not hinder the neighboring operation. We're not going back in time to look at existing operations that are legal nonconforming as it pertains to those buffers or setbacks. We wouldn't be doing that with this action. It would strictly be going to new development that would introduce a sensitive use, like residential, adjacent to an industrial use. The second question, I don't really feel that I could answer whether or not that would result in job loss, but I know that is a concern related in, or noted in public comment regarding this policy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Manganay, followed by Council, Deputy Mayor Halter.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Thank you for that, you guys, for that presentation. Ms. Soder, she, she described on page ninety that she, something about exploring the height changes of the harbor parking structure. When was, when was that added?
That was in the original draft publication in April sixteenth.
Okay. And what is the current height or restrictions or limitations of those, of those parcels?
CTO, so interesting in that this site is the downtown specific plan.
Correct.
And it's T-one-six taper, which allows additional height allowances depending on the building type, because our downtown specific plan is a form-based code. So there's a little bit of nuance. I want to say with the CTO, with the downtown specific plan, I'll have to truth out the number, but I, it's by stories in our downtown specific plan. And I want to say it's within the taper zone, there's four stories with a fifth-story element. I want to look back at my notes before and come back to.
Sure.
Amen that possibly. But the development or the downtown specific plan also has additional height allowances based on what building type you use. For example, commercial building type can have an additional story beyond what the zone does. It's, it's definitely a, a little bit of a Jenga policy, but I will truth that out, going back to my notes in the DTSP. I believe it's fourth story with a fifth-story element not to exceed twenty-five percent of the footprint, but I will confirm.
Okay, thank you. And you mentioned earlier that council cannot designate parks and open space on privately-owned property.
That's correct.
And how does that relate to or correlate, coincide with existing open space such as school sites?
So the school sites are owned by the school district, and, you know, any kind of shared use of that space would be subject to a shared use agreement. I believe the superintendent provided a comment letter regarding welcoming those discussions to look at that, based on the after-school uses they have on a number of their properties. To designate a private property as parks or open space would be a regulatory takings, put it simply, a taking away of additional rights by way of changing that use without their consent, or, you know, just doing it as a decree. So we're not in a position to do that. The parks, open space, and conservation element includes a park master plan implementation action. And that's where we'll kind of assess the current baseline of our parks, future opportunities to explore or expand or provide additional recreational amenities, open space areas and parks, and that would be the appropriate mechanism to look at that from a future perspective on other opportunities for that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for the question.
I have a couple more, but I'll pass it on.
Okay. Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you. I thank you, staff. Thank you, Mayor. A couple things. First, the fact that we're down to this level of detail is a really good sign. I mean, the process was pretty amazing. It wasn't perfect. There were hiccups, but it, it covered a lot of data, a lot of input. So with that said, I am concerned with some of the last-minute additions. And one of them is LU six-point-two. In thinking about it, and I think something that's gonna come forward here shortly, is perhaps changing definition of a project from a discretionary project. My only concern, as I think about that, that's better, I think, because then you what, take out, if somebody changes a hot water heater or replaces a roof, that they, you take away that, the fact that that was a new project. But discretionary, I'm afraid, may include things like putting solar and making a lot of these companies a lot more, using more renewable energies. I'm not quite sure if that was, that would be considered a discretionary permit, is solar.
I'm sorry. Solar would be, there's a number of state laws that allow solar.
Okay.
That wouldn't be a discretionary permit. So the intent behind that, again, allowing solar is, is allowed. And there are other mechanisms than state law that would allow that to bypass a discretionary permit. And again, the intent isn't to hinder maintenance or repair. It really is to address new development, and with new development, be subject to the new regulations. If, let's say, an industrial operator had outdoor storage and wanted to enclose that storage, and they're already up to the property line, that would be an amendment that we would look to pull back, if there is an immediately residential property next to it, based on the intent behind this policy, as an example. But a re-roof to an existing structure, not changing the footprint, demolishing half of it, and replacing the new portion would have to adhere to any setbacks if it's against that line and needs to be pulled back. But again, we would defer to the regulatory agency for what that looks like. But again, we would defer to the regulatory agency for what that looks like. And a lot of that detail will go into our zoning code and addressing these kind of legal non-conforming situations where we will be able to go in more granular detail of what these scenarios look like and how best to address on a case-by-case basis.
My concern would be the threat to the existing industrial that we have and whether or not they can even expand at their current location. And so that would be a concern for me in watching the new language as we develop that now. And secondly, as we look at air, air quality, air pollution, I know from looking at, I had an app at one point that told me all the different violations in the, in the city and the county. And I remember most of those were the freeways, especially where people are breaking, like at the 101 and the 33. So I'm not convinced that a lot of the industry we have today is necessarily those high pollutant polluters that we used to see in Lake Erie and Pittsburgh and, you know, East Bay and so forth, you know. So I think we've got to remember who these businesses are and what restrictions are already on them. Second is, when it comes to tenant protections, I know we did decide in May of last year as a council that these are the ones that we will look at. The intent, again, in looking at tenant protections at all is to create certainty for people who rent and make sure that we have affordability, kind of address the affordability side of it. With that said, I would be even more interested. I, I would leave tenant protections and land, land use and move forward with what we have decided before. I would then look at job creation and fixing the bell curve of housing. How can we make it easier for people to permit their housing projects in a way that fits the character and nature of those neighborhoods? I believe the difference between the downtown and the midtown versus perhaps the newer homes in the east side is we have, whatever somebody needed a 600 square foot bungalow, they built it next to a 4,000 square foot main house. And so all different economic levels are living together in the same community. That went away about 70 years ago. And I think that's a big problem that we face today. So I see many ways forward to create affordability, not just limiting property owners to the point that we will, we may in fact lose a lot of the mom and pops, which are usually the best property owners. So I worry about that. Moving quickly. I don't have any problem with impact fees. I have problems with unpredictable impact fees, ones that you can't determine before you enter a process. And along those same lines, I know in discussions with staff, that when we look at continuing providing the permit system, that we, we have a good permit system. We know we have come a long ways in a few years and we know that we have a lot further we have to come, we have to go. My goal as a council member, along with being alongside staff, is to make the city of Ventura a model city of the best permit processing, community development process. Because I know for a fact that 30 to 35% of the cost of every new home is the process. And that unpredictability limits people who want to invest. So looking at job creation, I believe we have to start allowing and encouraging the higher paying jobs that it takes to live here, to come to our city. So restricting industrial land that may be able to do that is a big concern for me. And then finally, because I have a lot, is, is just the fact that I know people, there's conversations about having housing too close to industrial because if someone in housing complains, usually the one that suffers is industrial, okay? Because we all have a heart for people living next to too much noise, too much light, too much particles in the air, things like that. But I absolutely believe, as do some of my good colleagues on the G-PAC, including Nick Bungie, for instance, that industrial, light industrial, craft, light industrial is a huge part of the future. So allowing housing to be intermingled with, I think Scott, one of the speakers spoke very eloquently toward, is a big part of encouraging that new wave of innovation and creativity that this state and this city and this coast is all about. And we didn't allow for that out of fear of somebody complaining about those things I mentioned and losing industrial altogether. And I get that because we've seen that. But somehow we got to be better than that. So anyways, those are just a couple of points.
Thank you. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So first, I want to echo council members, thanks to the staff for getting us this far. I want to thank the G-PAC members, some who are here tonight, who just are gluttons for punishment. So I see Planning Commissioner McCarty right there in my view. I see Stephanie Caldwell. I saw Luis Lampura. I saw Dana Car, Carba. Is there anybody else? And I see we've got a Planning Commissioner back there hiding. So it wasn't on the G-PAC, but was at a lot of the meetings. So again, I just want to thank you all for your, your efforts here. If there's anybody I'm missing, oh, yep, there's Casey. Okay. So again, just thank you for your time. So I, I kind of want to set the table, actually on next steps before I kind of go into my questions. So, and, and my, my first statement is, I think it's important that we remember that the city of Ventura is the 297th largest city in the United States. There are 15,000 cities in the United States and we are in the top 2%. We're not one of the 10 mega cities, but we are definitely one of the larger cities in the United States. So as we go through this, I think it's important that we remember that. So if the general plan is adopted tonight, I kind of want to understand next steps because this is just the beginning of the next process is my, is my basic understanding of it. So the 1989 comprehensive plan and the 2005 general plan would theoretically, on November 21st, the 2025 general plan would become the new general plan, but only in a third, two thirds of the city approximately. So the coastal plan, the 1989 plan still remains in place. What is next steps to bringing the 2025 general plan into full compliance?
So, great question. I'm going to do a series of next steps. So after the general plan, as you noted, is adopted, hopefully tonight, it will become in effect on November 20th. Thereafter, we have 180 days pursuant to state law to be, make in an interim zoning ordinance to have a skeleton, if you will, of now this land use designation. For example, the industrial land use designation was once just one in the 2005 general plan, now becomes five. So what does that mean? You know, kind of a choose your own adventure. I'm here and now I'm here and now. And this is what this means and these are my standards today. At the same time, and we have commenced earlier this year, our local coastal program update and land use plan. You are right that our current governing general plan equivalent document is our 1989 comprehensive plan. With the exception of the downtown specific plan, because that was certified by the California Coastal Commission. So that does apply in our coastal zone. That said, the 2005 general plan never was certified by the Coastal Commission, which is why we fall back for everything outside of the DTSP or downtown specific plan in the coastal zone. We fall back to the 1989 comprehensive plan. Our consultant for the local coastal program has been monitoring the general plan as it will lay the foundation for that future local coastal program effort, which is very much in its infancy. We are just starting to get our stakeholder group formed. It will be at least a two-year process that will have much opportunity for public outreach. With the adoption of the 2050 general plan, the 2005 general plan effectively goes away. It's retired, it's on the shelf, but it's no longer applicable to future development. The 2025, the 2050 general plan would be that document. And then as we work on that interim zoning ordinance, we will be issuing a request for proposal, probably early next year, to do a larger comprehensive zone code update to chapter 24 of the San Bueno Ventura Municipal Code. And that will be looking at other directives within the general plan, revisiting certain codes, looking at different studies, exploring different overlays, looking to shorten the permit processing timeline with more efficiency. That's going to be a larger, probably a two-year effort as well, if not closer to three, to ensure that we're able to clean up past inconsistencies we've had with application as regulators that we haven't been able to get to. And then also looking at now with the general plan, setting the stage for this next step, what that looks like with the zoning code implementing that vision. I hope that answers your question.
It did. I'm just trying to understand the timeline.
Okay.
So the local coastal program.
Local coastal program slash land use implementation plan, we're looking end of 2026, early 2027. If we start the zoning code effort, let's say.
Stop you with that one?
Okay.
Okay. So then that gets submitted to the coastal commission?
Correct. And then it has a subsequent timeline to be certified by the coastal mission, which could be a good year, if not two. 18 months, probably.
So theoretically, the local coastal program, just taking that one, we're not looking at implementation of that until 2029?
Yes.
Okay. Based on that, okay. So then moving up.
To include the, the subsequent California Coastal Commission certification process. Yes. So all the whole kit and caboodle.
So theoretically, potentially four years out.
Correct.
Okay. And then the zoning code, so we're going to have a skeleton?
Correct.
Version of it in, by May of 26?
Yes.
And then the full update will be?
I'm hoping Q2 2028.
28, okay. Okay. And then objective design standards?
Yes. Wonderful question, or word. That may have a question after it.
Uh, when are we expecting that?
Oh, great. Wonderful question. So we've been hitting the pause button with that till this phase because the adoption of the general plan does include some development standards. There is some language regarding step backs, buffers potentially, that we would want to reflect within our objective design standards. We have queued up our consultant that did outreach this summer to get that next step. You'll have an item before you at council to look at the next phase of that contract. We're looking to create a stakeholder group of architects. We're going to reach out to the AIA because while we're getting great guidance from the design review committee, we're really looking for more, you know, more feedback regarding actual architectural design elements. And then we will have that stakeholder group bring it back to the DRC, as well as have additional opportunity for public input in that forum. Before finalizing, I'm hoping by summer of next year.
Okay. Next question is summer of 2026.
Correct.
Okay. Historic survey?
Yes.
What is the timeline?
That is time. We are looking at early January of 2026 for city council adoption of the city historic survey.
Okay. And that's the first citywide?
Correct.
Historic survey, okay. And then I'm just going to throw out a couple of other plans really quick. How does the, the adoption, if, keep the, the big word if, it's adopted. How does it affect the downtown specific plan, the hillside management program and the sad, I'm just picking a couple. The Satikoid Wells Community Plan.
So depending on the order of priority within the implementation action, if it's a short-term action, a midterm action or a long-term action, that would be best how we, you know, pick our first bite of the apple, if you will. We would utilize, of course, at council's direction with prioritizing and speeding up certain deliverables, probably some outside planning consultants to help with the creation of, let's say, updating to a specific plan or the view corridor study. That can be done in parallel with these other longer-term planning documents we just talked about, the local coastal program, the zoning code, the interim zoning code. They can happen in concert with each other. The only linear one is local coastal program that requires that subsequent step with the California Coastal Commission. But really, it's at the discretion and the direction of the council. And we are required by your first implementation action in the land use element to give you an annual update of our short-term deliverables to you and not just community development, all the other departments that touch this general plan. So Public Works, Parks and Rec, Ventura Water, Public Safety, Police will all have an update for all of our short-term items. And at that time, you can direct us or redirect us to switching up the priorities or adjusting as needed. And if needed, going into the general plan to make an amendment, as you're legally allowed to do four times every year.
Okay. And so my last, I guess, comment is, your work's not done.
Not at all. But it's job security. It's good.
Okay. Okay. Those are my questions for right now. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Before I ask a question in regards to EJ 9.3 and A10, I wanted to ask Deputy Mayor Halter, I wanted to get some clarity. You, you would ask, you had made a comment on, in regards to that. Can, may I ask what it was so I don't ask the same question?
It was the fact that we had made a decision back in May to look at certain tenant protections. And I think that was done through the land use section of our general plan. And I, I would recommend that we keep it there and then look at other ways to make housing affordable along with those. So.
So you're, you're saying keep EJ 9.3, keep those two in, in this?
In the land use.
In this document?
In the land use planning document, yeah.
Thank you. Thanks for that clarification. I wanted to talk about the, someone came up and talked about a mature tree ordinance. But we do have a tree protection ordinance that's listed in the general plan. And I, I'm, I'm assuming that the mature tree is part of that.
That's correct, yes. We would look to the Parks and Rec Department to work with their own commissions regarding that. And that has been a comment within the context of a tree protection ordinance, looking at mature trees within that.
I know our Parks and Rec Director is here and, and we had talked after the last meeting, I think, where that's, that's in the works right now. So that is being crafted out. That's going to be coming to city council pretty soon, definitely this year. Yeah, okay. And then I wanted to talk a little bit about the MMRP in regards to, you know, you not wanting or not being able to touch that. And I just, I want to, I want to get clarity on this. So the council has authority, right, to modify, clarify narrow mitigation measures before certification as long as the final record still meets CEQA's intent? Is that correct?
I will defer to Matt Maddox of RINCON, who worked on the EIR for that question. Thank you.
Absolutely. The answer is absolutely. The, the final EIR is not final until you certify it this evening or at a future date. So you can make modifications to it. The, the hesitation or the point, though, is that if any of the modifications create a new impact or an increase in impact in the environment that weren't determined in the, in the document. For example, if we remove a mitigation measure and no longer have a protection that would have reduced an impact to less than significant, we need to then recirculate the document back off the public review, give the public and agencies an opportunity to review what those changes are. If there are minor modifications that simply clarify or update the mitigation measures to reflect some, a clarification or an edit, but that make no change on the environment, we can absolutely make those changes this evening.
Awesome. Thank you. And so then here's my example, okay? For example, if bio one says that 500 feet for all species, can we change that to say, to be consistent with state and federal agency protocols?
We can, if you can allow me to maybe add some context to that, because I know that came up as part of the public. That is, so the point of all biological resource mitigation measures, one through nine, is they are intended to be prescriptive or steps. So biological resource mitigation, one, is actually determined if there is potential for an impact to a sensitive species and candidate species. And that includes, I think there was also comment about mountain lions as well. Mountain lion is considered a candidate species. That would also be part of it. We do discuss mountain lions as part of being part of wildlife corridors. So any type of species that may, has, have potential based on both federal and state mapping to occur on site would require a biological resource assessment to occur. It is up to the discretion of that biologist to determine the, the distance. 500 feet is the recommended in coastal zones, which is why we went with the conservative number of 500 at that point. So it would, it could be a smaller buffer. The buffer is intended just for the study area. The point being 500 feet is that just because a property is, or a proposed project is occurring on one acre, there may be a potential for a species to occur next door if there's a creek running through the neck, the neighbor property, but not the proposed parcel that we're looking at. So the intent of that buffer is to ensure that we do an adequate review of the area around. Five, up to 500 feet is generally recommended by, by state and federal agencies. That's also consistent with what the county's buffer is as well. But, but, so I want to make sure that that's not, it's not required to be 500 feet. It's still up to the biologist to determine. If there's no potential for a species to occur, that buffer could be smaller.
Well, that's, that's good news. So the biologist makes the decision on how far out they go?
Correct.
Okay.
And again, it's site-specific, it's, it's potential species-specific. They're making a call based on the potential for an impact to occur. What we really want to avoid is what some of the commentators made, which is we don't want to cut down a tree because that didn't get looked at as part of the analysis and therefore a sensitive species is removed or, or lost. So as part of that initial biological resource assessment on the grounds, there will be a desktop review and a site-specific review that looks at the, the adequate buffer to determine that if there are construction or whatever the development potential may be, that there won't be an impact to, to one of those species. And therefore that becomes a take of a sensitive species and a violation of state and federal law.
If we wanted to make any kind of revisions on any one of those one through nine bios, could we still adopt the plan and send you back to do, to look at some revisions on that?
I think we, we absolutely can. I think we, we absolutely can. I think we, perhaps we want to discuss some, what some of that preferred language is. Because I might defer to our legal counsel on making, making sure that we have a idea, exact idea of what that is.
Oh, well, there, you know, there was a, a great letter that came out from Colab that had some recommended language in there, and that might be something just to look at, you know, uh, um-
We have, we started with that, and I, and I will admit it also that a number of those recommendations were part of the final EAR as well. There were recommendations like from the 100 feet down to 15 feet for, I think, bio mitigation number six. Again, I, I want to stress that the way the mitigation measures are currently read, and if you read them down the letter, it's not always saying that that's an absolute number. It is up to the discretion at the time of the assessment.
That being said, though, um, in order to adopt the general plan this evening, you would have to certify the EIR. So that would need an act, those actions need to occur in concert.
In other words, we should discuss what that language should be, without going back behind, behind closed doors.
Absolutely, okay, thank you.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your report. Um, and I also want to echo what, um, Councilmember, uh, McReynolds, and also Deputy Mayor, um, and applaud the both of you for being those chairs that really helped in usher in this wonderful general plan. So thank you for all of the things that you do for Ventura. I do want to just clarify a few things in regards to, um, LU 8.24. Um, we can, uh, define what type of drive-through we're talking about, yes?
Yes, that's correct. We can add language to that, uh, to further clarify the intent behind the original policy, which, my recollection is that it was really to promote access to fresh food and healthier food options. So fast food was, uh, probably the intent of the drive-throughs that were proposed to be considered to ban.
Correct, and I think that, um, you know, uh, this is exactly why we do this, right? And to ensure that when we hear things that says, hey, you know, um, people with disabilities are going to be disadvantaged or disserviced if we were to move forward with something that's not as defined as what we had thought. So, um, I definitely want to consider that when we do our deliberations, and just ensuring that that is specifically, um, the intent was to, um, to, um, I think it was just for fast food and not to banks and pharmacies.
That's correct.
All right. So in regards to, um, EJ 9.3 and EJA 8.10, when was this added?
This was in the original draft published in April, uh, of this year. I can defer to Matt Ramey when it was discussed before G-PAC. Uh, I imagine it was some time ago, within the context of the creation of the draft. But it has been in the draft document since publication.
Yeah, before Mr. Ramey answers, it's not like we added this-
That's correct.
Like last week, just because we wanted to, it's been here the whole time.
That's correct.
Okay.
I would have to go back and look at notes about when the discussion happened with it. But, um, it, it, I believe it was actually part of the, what we call the policy framework, which was before the general plan advisory committee. And then, um, through comments, it got added into the general plan, which was essentially our process.
Right.
Yeah.
So I just wanted to make sure that we clarify that, because apparently we're having some historical amnesia. Um, so with, uh, the community did survey in regards to what we wanted to look at in regards to tenant protections. And the staff did bring us eight of those policies that we had discussed in May. That doesn't preclude us from thinking about other tenant protections that we can look at in the next 30 years. I mean, this is not just us thinking about the next two years, the next four years that we're on council. It's also looking at what is possible in protecting half of our, our, uh, city, um, to make sure that our, our renters are also protected as well.
Thank you for that. Uh, Councilmember McReynolds?
Uh, thank you. I, I want to just take it as a jumping-off point from Councilmember Schumacher's, because I forgot to ask my last question, which was, so the housing element, we're now, we're currently in the 2129 housing element. So we're halfway through the current housing element approximately. When do you start working on the next one?
2027.
And then what, how many housing elements do you expect this general plan to go through?
Three.
Three, three more, or, uh, the current one plus two more?
Current one plus two more, and maybe stepping into the one thereafter.
Okay, just, uh, again, that was just more setting the table. So, um, I, I wanted to address some of the comments that we heard. I want to take account, uh, you know, we had, we talked about all of the outreach, everything like that. We had 21 speakers come out tonight, so I kind of want to address some of those comments, uh, just for a couple of minutes, and I'll come back later. So I'm not going to do these in any particular order, but, uh, uh, our Arts and Culture Commissioner, uh, Rodriguez, brought up pictures of the Chumash within the general, is that something that we can still do, or?
Absolutely, we can add those through the document at the direction of council.
Okay. And then, uh, Ms. Wheeler, uh, talked about the sense of urgency, mostly in, in, her comments were related to, uh, climate change. Is, is that something more in the CARP, or is that something that's part of the general plan? In terms of, she talked about sense of urgency, acting in concert, accelerating the transition, is that?
We have a number of goals within the, uh, general plan that speak to the CARP. Specifically, LU 12, um, talks about achieving carbon neutrality. Um, and then with that has corresponding policies 12.1 and 12.2, which are speak, uh, specifically to the Ventura CARP, to maintain a regularly updated, to reduce GHG emissions in the city, and to build community resilience, as well as 12.2 Priority CARP Action Plans, requires us to maintain a regularly update the city's Priority CARP Action Plans.
Okay, and then, uh, Ms. Kessler, kind of on the same topic, talked about a mature tree ordinance. I think Mr. Duran already, or Councilmember Duran already touched on that. Uh, we, we mentioned the drive-through ban with Councilmember Schumacher. And then, uh, the noise element regarding lawn equipment is in city parks. Is that, is that more of a policy question than it is a?
That would be more of, uh, implementation of their, uh, protocols and maintenance, that we could look at that and equipment that they use. I, I believe that our CARP, and, and then connected to the general plan speaks about using electric machinery or, um, landscaping, uh, equipment when feasible. Um, and, and when that specific equipment is done, then we look to potentially, um, better environmentally qualified or efficient, um, equipment to replace it.
Okay, and then, uh, Mr. Norin's comment regarding commercial spaces, specifically, he mentioned telegraph and day. Interestingly enough, we're, we're at the corner of telegraph and day, basically, you know. I, I do see all of you sneaking out to get Starbucks, so just, I'm putting it out there. I have yet to be offered once, uh, to, Mr. McDonald. So I, 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 I think as we get to deliberations, I want to revisit that, uh, on it. So I think I'm going to bite off one of the bigger topics here. Uh, and I know Mr. Guthrie and I, if, if, Mr. Guthrie, if, we, we wouldn't mind coming to the, up to the podium, if he's still here.
I can back here.
Okay. You're not tall enough.
I'll work on it.
Okay. Okay, uh, so you, you mentioned the, you know, I, I think you've acknowledged, uh, we need to figure out something with the park, the harbor parking structure. I mean, it can't continue on its current path, uh, on it. You, you mentioned you had a hesitation about height, I believe?
Definitely.
So you're, you're, you're proposing that we would u- use the language regarding revitalization, uh, of it i- as a more broader concept, or?
Yes, just so it doesn't restrict it to, we have to go taller.
Okay.
So I think there's plenty of opportunities to do things there that don't require going above the on-ramp.
Okay. So, I guess, so your basic, your proposal is, the, the word revitalizing, you know, it, it's open to some level of interpretation. Uh, I, I think this council agrees with you. Uh, whatever happens, I think we're all envisioning a robust citizen process in that, uh, on it. And, and I, I think, so if we were to consider the word revitalizing, you, you realize that that, that could be a lot of things, but it would be, I think we're all committed to doing it as a robust.
I think it encompasses what we really want to do.
Okay. And then I want to discuss density in the downtown specific plan. So, so my understanding is there is a desire to assign density, because it's unlimited right now, is my-
Yeah, yeah, the, the, the density bonus law allows what's called a base density study. And that's, to me, that's a very flawed process. Um, so, s- setting what is the maximum density and then basing density bonus on that makes a lot more sense to me.
Okay, so I want to defer to staff, don't go. Uh, is, the language that they, they brought up in, uh, page 90, uh, does it do that, or like, what, what is the goal of the language versus the concern?
So, um, on, it is page 90, um, in LU 13 Downtown Specific Plan, update the downtown specific plan with the following changes. That includes number four, add minimum and maximum densities to the specific plan zoning districts based on the density of projects built under the specific plan. Um, that absolutely would set a minimum and maximum density, and then it would help us to understand how to apply density bonus law.
So hearing that, do you still have that concern, or?
No, I didn't have a concern. I, I was going to say, I think we need to add one more element to that. And what we currently define as very high density is 54 dwelling units per acre. That was based on apartment sizes 15, 20 years ago. So apartment sizes have gotten smaller, so that maximum is probably, needs to be adjusted up. I don't know how much, but it should be based really on changes in square footage. But in the downtown specific plan, we also define minimum parking spots at one per 1,500 square feet. And we know there's no apartments at 1,500 square feet anymore. So I think as part of that, defining the upper and lower, um, dwelling units per acre, we should define, um, number of parking spaces that's more reasonable. Because right now, we're more liberal than what, uh, density bonus law allows, and that tells you that we're very, very liberal.
Okay. I'm going to ask, if you want to respond, if staff?
I, I don't believe we're more liberal in our parking standards than what density bonus law allows, since that allows people to then reduce their parking requirements. Um, we can keep it very simple and say, add minimum and maximum densities to the specific plan zoning districts, period. Um, and then we can also look at, you know, explore, um, adjusting the parking requirements in the downtown specific plan.
To match density bonus.
Sure, to match density bonus, sounds fine.
Okay, your last bite at the apple, you got, this, I'm going to give up my time, is?
No, I'm good.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you. I wanted to go back, Councilmember Mango, did you still have more questions, or? You're good, okay.
Can I?
Uh, Councilmember Schumacher?
Thank you. Um, if I may, can I ask Stephanie Caldwell to step up to the podium? Hi, Ms. Caldwell.
Hello.
Um, just, uh, in regards to your comments in, uh, for LU 6.2, I know that, I think it was Councilmember Campos who had asked how this affects jobs in Ventura. Can you respond in, uh, I, I think the staff said that they may not know how that, this affects our economy, so can you help us?
Sure, I think the nuance in the change in the language. Um, so the original language was new residential developments would need to make the buffer. But without that caveat, it could be the, the existing industrial that would have to make the, the buffer.
Sure.
And so there's a, if there was a, let's say, a solar project, a large solar project, uh, which just happened on the avenue. If that were to happen now, um, based on the, the buffer that they would have to create, they could potentially lose about, um, I think, you know, maybe four acres out of their parcel, which would significantly impede their ability to continue the operations at the level that they are currently at, let alone any type of expansion or additional jobs.
That's important to know.
So that's one example, but that's, you know, the potential of what could happen. It's the unintended consequences, there, I'm sure, are others.
Absolutely, thank you.
And on that note, um, I wanted to ask, um, because I know it was mentioned earlier, that language, I mean, we're open to taking it back to the original language that it was, it doesn't need to be changed.
Absolutely, we can put that on the screen, uh, should that be of service to the council.
Okay.
I still have.
You have more questions, yes. Um, I, I just have one more question.
Oh, please, oh, please.
Um, and that, uh, touching back on the, um, tenant protections and the EJA 10, um, I know that, that's also in our housing element, and I guess maybe just hearing you tell us the need to have it both in the general plan and housing element.
I wouldn't say there is a need directly that there is a correlation between the elements as a entire general plan document. Um, the housing element has Program 32, and as a part of the, you know, creation of the, of the G-PAC and, and looking at policy considerations, I'm sure the G-PAC leaned to the housing element to, but, you know, look at that connectivity with other elements throughout the general plan. Um, I wasn't here at that time, but that would be my understanding of how it came into the environmental justice element.
Yeah, thank you for that. Um, and then just, uh, this is more of a comment that I, I think you just touched on. You know, you, you weren't here, and so your interpretation is this, and that's totally fine. Um, I, I think in some areas, maybe we could, uh, clean up some language in where, um, we're leaving it up to interpretation, um, because I think that's where we may get in trouble. I mean, this is a document that goes for years and years to go, and, you know, I want to keep you here. Um, but we don't know, if you will, you know what I mean? And so I just want to make sure that maybe in some areas that we can tighten some of the language, uh, where, you know, we're not, um, leaving it up for interpretation, where others may come and say, well, no, that's not what they meant. This is what they meant, and it's different.
Absolutely, and, and more often than not, with a new general plan, we will amend it within the next year or two, because we will recognize, uh, just this case, you know. Oops, upon application, we recognize that this policy may need to be tweaked, or revised, or eliminated, or added to. And that's where really, you know, um, a joke can say, that, you know, a planner can nerd out, for lack of a better term, is when we actually apply these policies, these goals, these actions, to where it actually hits the land through the zoning code, that's when we make those refinements, and that's why the state allows the opportunity to amend it four times. And with each time, it doesn't have to be one amendment. It can be a series of amendments to the document. So jurisdictions like to kind of bank up those requests to take the, you know, the best bang for the buck, if you will, um, when they, when they have to open up the general plan.
And my last question, um, regarding that, actually, um, because we only have four times that we can make changes to the general plan, is there a process that is best preferred, um, so that we're not, uh, cutting ourselves short in making, like, we're going to run out of four chances to make changes? So, just kind of curious as to like, what would the process be? Not necessarily what would it be, but what's encouraged so that we're not having to come back too many times where we won't be able to make changes after?
I think as staff and, and other departments play with the general plan and start looking at those short-term actions, those potential revisions to make it even better will become apparent. And the executive team, along with management staff, will keep tally, if you will. And as part of our regular updates to council, that would be part of that update. Here's how we're doing, here are some potential revisions we have noted as a possible amendment forthcoming, or we just jump to that, you know, jump to that step and propose an amendment if we notice a more immediate need, um, that, uh, requires us to address it quickly.
Thank you for that. Okay, Councilmember McReynolds?
Okay, so maybe my last set of questions. Uh, I did, uh, I know Deputy Mayor Halter, uh, mentioned, uh, Mr. Scott, I, you, I did hear your comments. I just, uh, I don't have any questions, but I wanted to note that. And then, uh, I wanted to call, uh, Amy Sherry up, uh, on it, uh, because I know sh- you, you didn't get to finish yours, your presentation, so you don't get to finish your presentation, but let's, let's talk about it. Uh, and as you're walking up, I do want to acknowledge that no one citizen was probably more involved outside of not being on any of the formal committees than you were. So, so thank you for your activism-
Thank you.
-and getting that word out, so, uh, so, so with that, uh, you wanted to talk about the CTO, is that, is that, uh?
Correct, thank you.
Okay, and, and so your proposal, the recommendation is 45 feet, uh, your recommendation is 35-
Correct.
-on it, understand-
Thirty-five.
Go ahead.
Um, 35 feet in height, so currently it's two and a half stories, 30 feet. Um, and I understand, like, for construction purposes, that's a little restrictive. So if you gained another five feet, you know, ordering materials and whatnot, you could build a more interesting building, I suppose.
Architecturally articulated building, okay.
And it would be three full stories. Um, another thing I'd like to address is the floor area ratio for both the commercial, which is, uh, the Brina Village Shopping Center, is currently 0.35, which is, you know, percentage of the lot, basically. And the CTO is 0.5. Both are increasing to 1.5. So it's a 300% increase and a 400% increase in mass on everything on Harb-
on Harbor and lower C-word, which is mind-boggling, especially if you're gonna, you know, increase the height, because anything between the buildings, the view that is left is sliver thin. So if you build 100% of the lot, and 100% of the lot, and 100% of the lot, it's really gonna diminish the character of the beach.
Okay, so let's stay on the FAR. So with staff, is that a correct analysis of the general plan in terms of the CTO, the 1.5 FAR?
Yes, that is the density that is allowed within that land use designation.
Okay. Okay, and then, I think you mentioned the view corridors on it.
Yeah, in the general plan, the draft general plan, it calls out for studying the view, studying current view corridors, and it's a moderate or medium length for the studies to be done, which is, I believe, like, eight to 10 years. So by then, you know, it's really too late. You drive down C-word and you could see.
And then, understanding, kind of the initial questions I asked staff, we're probably still four years out before that even.
Correct.
Just, just so you.
For the LCP.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay, just putting that out there, okay.
I know, but then.
Okay, no, I just want to put it out there, okay. Was there any comment on that?
Just that we heard that the view corridor study was of importance to the council when it came up, and that we would look at that in concert with the LCP to make sure they track, and hopefully it would come to fruition before that.
Okay, same question, last bite at the apple. Anything else?
There was one slide I didn't get to that kind of shows the curve of C-word. It's the Google Earth kind of slanted at the right angle, so it's not a straight line that you could see from, from C-word to the beach. It literally zigzags back and forth, so it was just a good visual.
Okay.
If you want to see it, I emailed it to all of you.
Okay. And again, thank you for your advocacy on this.
Thank you for the recognition.
One last question or clarification from me. I think it was Ms. Wheeler who talked about, and Councilmember McRaines touched on the sense of urgency. I wrote in my notes, I think she was talking about more explicit statement in the vision statement, and I don't know if she's still here, if that is, if I wrote down correctly. She's not here, okay. But if that were, I know that the general plan committee, they worked on those statements, and I don't know that I would want to change too drastically, but I just thought I'd bring that up, but she's not here, so. Any other comments or questions, and so that way we can jump into deliberations? Okay. So, Councilmember Mango Nae? Oh, Councilmember Campos?
I think that Councilmember Mango Nae.
No, okay.
I think we can deliberate.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, so deliberations. And I want to just, I think, echo as well, a lot of hard work and effort put on by our committee members and our residents here, who took the time, basically, to volunteer and give their input and really just make an effort to ensure that there were a lot more participation from other residents. I really just want to thank you for that. I want to thank the, both the chairs, our council members, who were diligent in leading this committee, thank you for your time and effort as well. I know that on top of regular council meetings and other committee meetings, you still had this one, and these were long, hard, arduous meetings, so thank you so much for your time and effort on that. But want to open it up for Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a question regarding, or actually, I'd like to get that verbiage that you were gonna show us on the LU 6.2, and see what our options are on that.
Michael, would you mind sharing my presentation?
How many options do you have for us?
Just one, to inspire.
Okay.
But I do have the original.
Yes.
The amended by Planning Commission on September 24th.
Okay.
And then something that staff, we decided to do, to help inspire the discussion. You may like it, but you may want to revise a bit. Apologies, I'm gonna have to fast forward here.
We're gonna open up the PowerPoint on a different computer that can share on the screen.
Go ahead.
Councilmember McRaines?
We'll come back to that one. So, is it all right if we just start with, like, the downtown specific plan in those questions? So, and, you know, so we heard from Miss Soder, Mr. Guthrie, and Ms. Burton on that item. So I guess, do we want to start with the density as a topic, in terms of establishing that? So, I mean, I don't have an issue with, you know, basically, what was brought forward, and, you know, I don't, do you want to do straw votes, or how do you envision?
We can do, like, thumbs up, like we've done before, and hopefully that'll give you the proper direction. So, we'll go ahead and do that, if there's other discussion or other.
Madam Mayor, sorry. I think what we ultimately need to move forward with this is very clear direction on the language that you would like, so that we can say you're adopting the general plan with the following changes, and we're very clear on what those changes are. And if we need to, we can, we can pull them up and type them up and put them on the screen to get agreement. I think it would solve any confusion later down the road if we ultimately end up with that.
Yeah.
I think you made one misstatement in terms of putting it on the screen.
Yeah. Yeah.
There's still time.
Yeah, and I think that's why, if we need it, we'll thumbs up, so that you can see that we're agreeing with that.
Okay.
Instead of voting.
Just a quick point of inquiry in regards to, so we're looking at the whole general plan and then discussing these, what is it, five? Five themes that are on Slide 29? Is that what we're all debating on?
All, like, all.
All of it, got it.
So I'm pulling downtown specific plan, just as a talking point.
Sure.
So, in terms of, so defining the minimum and maximum densities via state density bonus, was that the intent, also in relation to parking standards?
Yeah, so I can just read back to what you had mentioned before, and so there's actually three changes that you wanted to make to LU A-13, and I'll start with this language, you can go from there. There's four items in that list. Number two would be changed to, instead of explore increasing the maximum allowable height of the public parking garage adjacent to the pier to support expanded tourism amenities, we would change that to explore revitalization of the public parking garage adjacent to the pier to support expanded tourist, tourism amenities.
I think it was.
Yeah, his wages.
Okay, yeah.
Mayor, just for clarity. Sorry. I think what the, for the council and the public, I think what this, sort of the dialogue that was done during tenant protections, where it's thumbs up and down, but then to lead to one vote on everything that was done.
Yes.
So I don't think the clerks expected to take role of any of this.
No, correct.
And also, it'll all just get, come back in one fell swoop vote.
Yes.
But what I'll do is take notes on each of these, and then I can read it all back in as part of the motion, just so we're very clear.
And then that'll be a one.
Exactly.
Thank you.
And I think the clerk is busy, so. For number four of that list, we would change it from add minimum and maximum densities to the specific plan zoning districts based on the densities of projects built under the specific plan. We would strike based on the densities of projects built under the specific plan, so that item would just read add minimum and maximum densities to the specific plan zoning districts.
Okay. And that's, okay.
We'll come back to that one.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then, we have an additional number five added that would read, under LU A-13, consider adjusting parking requirements in the downtown specific plan to match density bonus parking standards.
That's what I heard. Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. And then, just to go back to your previous comments, do we also want to include Chumash photos to be added? This is a little bit more generic. We can add five additional Chumash photos to the areas where Chumash history is referenced.
Yeah.
I don't know if that's gonna be a number.
Yeah, I was gonna say, I don't think you have to put a number. It just says photos.
Yeah.
Okay.
You want to go back to?
I'm gonna go, are you?
Yeah, I'm good, great.
I'm gonna go to Councilmember Campos, and then Councilmember Duran. Is that okay?
Councilmember Campos, can we have you turn your mic on?
Sorry. I actually wanted to talk about something different, not the LU policy, is that all So, I recall the environmental justice policy. Mr. Ramey and myself, Pete Freeman, who was part of G-PAC later, and the county environmental justice person did a tour of the West Side, and I think they went further out than I could go in the wheelchair, which was just at the beginning when G-PAC was forming. That's how long ago that information has been available. So I want to make that statement and say I don't think it's something we should be worried about changing right now. If we can change G-PAC four times a year, when it comes to fixing things or addressing things, is the time to change, change that. So I would like to leave that one part as it stands. It was worked on for a long time. And then, regarding the biological policies and mapping, they should also remain as they are, because the law changes enough too with environmental species, that we may be forced to change it along the way. That would fall into one of our four annual changes, and we do have 100 opportunities to change this plan over the years. And then, the final point, when you were talking about, Kathleen Wheeler spoke, she's a language and grammar expert, and so I don't think she was asking for a big change in the vision statement. She was looking at what we had, and wanted to adjust a few words to really express the urgency that we're in for climate, which exists in the vision, it's just a little linguistic So I'd like to suggest that we keep those two that way, and then, we could even reach out to Ms. Wheeler, she may have emailed her comment in as well. But I would like that change made in the vision, if we can come to an agreement on it.
Were those your comments for now?
Yes.
Thank you. Okay. Thank you for that. I will go to Councilmember Duran, and then come back to Deputy Mayor Halter.
Okay, so, in the LU 6.2, I think here are options, you want to go through those? Thank you.
Thank you. So the original language that was in the published draft in April, and was unamended until the Planning Commission meeting is on the top. So, reading it into the record, 6.2, industrial compatibility require that new large-scale residential projects located adjacent to industrial designated land incorporate buffers, setbacks, and/or design features to minimize potential conflicts and support harmonious coexistence. The Planning Commission revision on September 24th reflected, require that new, new projects that would result in residential uses located to industrial uses incorporate buffers, setbacks, and/or design features to minimize potential conflicts and support harmonious coexistence. Staff suggested language, just to underscore the intent behind Planning Commission, and maybe just provide an opportunity for more conversation. Industrial slash residential compatibility require buffers and other design features between residential and industrially designated properties to ensure compatibility, and those buffers and standards and other design features will be worked out in the zoning code, and we'd look at specific legal non-conforming situations to best address how, how and what those buffers would look like.
So my recommendation would just go back to the original language, that's what I think would be the best.
I would, I would agree with that, just to, I think, keep it, again, I think, for me, this is one of those, you know, the intent is, and I don't know if that, the original intent will be kept, if we don't go back to the original statement. So, everyone, are you good with that?
Yes.
Okay, so, we'll go back to the original. Thank you. Anything else, Councilmember Duran? No?
Yes. Thank you. So there's, in regards to the, my apologies, in regards to the BIOS, MMRP, Louise, if, could you, could you come up? Because I'm, I would really appreciate it, thanks so much. And I know that we talked about that letter, the collab letter, and the revisions, and so Louise, if you wouldn't mind just ask, just telling us why, why you felt these changes needed to be made in those BIOS.
There's a couple of different reasons. One, that the level of detail that is in the MMRP's, it actually exceeds what is in MMRP's in other municipalities. Other municipalities tend to refer to regulations and say that, you know, biological studies, biological surveys will be done in accordance with state and federal guidance. How protocol studies are set up is determined by federal, if it's a federally listed species, state, if it's a state-listed species, not by cities. So, one concern that the city may get into with having this level of detail within their MMRP's is, what are you gonna do if the state or federal government changes their guidelines? You will have to amend your general plan. Whereas if you simply refer to following existing protocol, then as that other protocol changes, as new species are listed, as, as some species, hopefully, you know, our goal is that they recover and they're removed from the, from needing to be monitored for. As those changes happen, if the general plan is a little more general and refers to following those guidelines, it's still protective. It's as protective as the regulatory agencies have already established, right? But it allows the general plan to shift with what those agencies are requiring.
Thank you, thank you so very much for that information. And so, back to staff, just any comments?
I think we would tend to agree that the mitigation measures as written do just that. The intent is that they would change over time as state and federal laws change. There's nothing in here that's saying you need to do above and beyond. What we are recommending is the current level of guidance that's provided by those state and federal agencies with discretion as time changes, as we mentioned previously, when a, when a bio, if called for with a project-specific analysis that needs to be done as part of mitigation measure one, or any of the other recurring ones, two through nine, the current, that biologist would have that discretion to do the assessment under current state and federal laws, and whatever local permit requirements may be. In some cases, like in immature tree ordinance or a local policy, there may be some additional requirements above and beyond state and federal law that get taken into consideration. requirements above and beyond state and federal law that get taken into consideration. None of the mitigation measures are establishing the city to do a unique analysis different than what the state or federal law already requires.
And I just piggyback on that. You know, bio measure one requires a site assessment within this applicable buffer. If that subject matter expert biologist on that project for that application comes back with a baseline that says there's nothing here, the rest of the mitigation measures or the policies don't apply. And so if we have, for example, the Alievus Park specific plan area, we have a road coming in, we have a levy coming in, and we've also had fuel management activity based on requirements from the fire department. You know, I believe we will have a new baseline from an ecosystem perspective after those projects are completed. And we would lean on the subject matter expert biologist to provide that data that then we can then use and then say, okay, thank you so much. Looks like in this case, the baseline is void of any environmentally sensitive habitat. Or in another situation, this buffer could be adjusted to 15 feet, or this one spot has this one sage scrub or what have you. You avoid that, you're good. Or there can be future mitigation, habitat restoration mitigation ideas in the future. Again, this is just setting the stage for those possible ideas, but we did try to build in flexibility to allow the subject matter experts, the biologists, to really truth it out on a case-by-case basis. So it's not so strident in a one-size-fits-all perspective.
Can I also just add to that? One of the objectives and the requirements that we have as part of this environment analysis for the general plan is that if there is a potential mitigation measure and it's feasible, we need to identify it. Whether it actually is required in the future, that's unknown at this point in time. But if there's a potential for an impact, we need to identify a potential feasible mitigation measure, which we've done in this, in the document, and therefore have it part of the general plan so the city is compliant with sequel law in moving forward.
Yeah, there's substantial evidence in the EIR that MMRP complies with the secret requirements.
Any comments by anybody else on that?
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yeah, great. Thank you, Madam Mayor. If what's written doesn't ask for anything more than what state and federal law currently offers, I don't see a real problem. But I was under the impression that it does. Okay? So I'm concerned about that. The other thing was, I look at things like the significant loss of eucalyptus trees and monarch butterfly habitats. I would, as a resident and somebody concerned about that, would love to see eucalyptus reestablished in places that aren't in fire zones. I think if I own property near that, I'd be very reluctant to do that because you might be creating a habitat that would limit your use of your property. So I'm very cognizant of unintended consequences. So I guess I have to rely on all of you to tell me if this is not more onerous than just simply saying, hey, make it simple, let's rely upon state and federal laws and just change as they change.
I'm gonna answer part of that and then punt to Matt Maddox here. In regards to fire requirements, state requirements for fuel management and fire, you know, fuel mitigation, state law would trump. We would lean on that for fuel mitigation and fire safety. That would be the number one when there was a head-to-head. But for the other questions you've asked regarding the MMRP going above and beyond, I would lean to Mr. Maddox.
Yeah, I would just like to stress that our team that put this together, including professional biologists that live and work here in Ventura, really emphasized that we are following state and federal protocol and doing it to the level of current recommendations. We, as mentioned in the presentation, consulted with California Department of Fish and Wildlife. They provided comment letters both on the notice of preparation as well as really detailed EIR public comments as well, which are in the final EIR and the responses to those, which enacted some changes and edits and clarifications. But they were also very appreciative of the majority of the mitigation measures as written, that it's following current CDFW protocol for a lot of the items, including biological resource assessments.
And that answers my questions. Thank you.
Councilmember McReynolds.
So a clarifying question. So it's the year 2041. I'm 70. My son with the same name is sitting here as Councilmember McReynolds in 2041, 30 years old. Is there any interpretation that, difference between today and in 2041?
The difference would be that the existing conditions in 2041 may be different, but the way that these mitigation measures write is what is on the ground at that point in time. So when the biological resource assessment comes up, it's what's on the ground then as opposed to what's on the ground now.
But in terms of the interpretation of what's to be...
No, there should be no difference. Everything in here is written to be consistent with CDFW and U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service protocol at the time. New regulations come, if new regulations are stripped or changed or amended. The one thing that we, that even came up with as part of this process is when a candidate gets added, and monarch butterfly is a good example, if it gets added to a sensitive species list, what goes from candidate to endangered at one point in time, how does that change? The way that these are drafted is that any of those, consistent with sequel law, would be a potential impact when that occurs. If it's not, if a species is delisted, then that's no longer a species of concern as part of the sequel analysis or as part of the biological resource assessment that would happen, that would be altered. So that's the existing conditions part that may change. But in terms of, will these become outdated five years from now or 30 years from now? There'll be the same policies that can be enacted based on current regulations.
Yeah, sadly, that's only 15 years from now. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, thank you. So it sounds like we're probably not making a change on this? Is that because it's following state and federal law? Is that what I'm...
That's what I'm hearing.
That's what I'm hearing.
Okay. All right. So the other one I have is Day and Telegraph and Ashwood and Telegraph and putting that back to commercial. Does anybody have any problem with that? Is that we were...go ahead.
Yeah, I think also Councilmember Campos has some input.
When we did hear from someone tonight, I'm not sure which speaker, about the fact that he doesn't see the building of community very much in the general plan. And I recall the meeting that we were talking about that at was the one where we were debating what should be commercial and what should be neighborhood center. And that night, we had many, many public speakers from the neighborhood a little south of here asking us to keep Telegraph and Ashwood Neighborhood Center. And that's what I believe we agreed to do because it was a community space. I'm not sure about Day Road, if we made the same decision or not. But I remember, because I know many of the people who spoke about Telegraph and Ashwood. And I think that's why we designated a state Neighborhood Center at that time.
Councilmember Manganay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So those two centers, what are they, what's the new land use designation?
So the current land use designation for Day, I'm sorry, for Ashwood and Telegraph is Neighborhood Center. For Day, here on the corner, is mixed use three.
Okay.
And something just to benefit the conversation, with the change from our shopping centers to commercial with the primary grocers, we did lose a couple, maybe even three Neighborhood Center-designated shopping centers. And we heard from G-PAC member Worsonop, the intent behind that designation before G-PAC, how it was developed, and again, tonight, just as additional information for you to consider.
Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead, Councilmember Duran.
Sorry about that. Thank you for that. I do know, I do know for sure, I'm not gonna say anything about Neighborhood Center for, but I do know for sure Day Road was one we said was, we're gonna keep commercial. That one I do remember for sure, Day Road and Telegraph. Would anybody have a challenge leaving that? Go ahead.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Could you bring slide 19 up? So I think we're moving into a larger conversation here. So you highlighted the bottom one, the Ventura Avenue and Main Mission Plaza Shopping Center.
Correct.
So just kind of bringing that into this conversation. So are we, is the proposal that changes to commercial?
So the Mission Plaza Shopping Center, prior to Planning Commission, was designated Neighborhood Center. And that was at the direction of council a couple of years ago in the context of the downtown specific plan, in lieu of a specific plan, a land use designation. Based on discussions had at Planning Commission on September 24th, the intent was, now that we've learned kind of more of the legislation out there, the best land use designation to maintain our grocery stores, we think the commercial designation is appropriate for the Mission Plaza Shopping Center instead of Neighborhood Center. And we went back to our notes, conferred internally, and made that decision, you know, to entertain tonight.
So as part of this conversation, I asked Councilmember Campos, are you in agreement with that?
Yes, because commercial will protect that property from becoming too much housing and driving out the plaza, driving out the grocery store.
Okay, so just to continue the conversation and bringing it back to the college. So my question is specifically regarding the Ventura College, where we're here today, and their long-term plans. Does it behoove us to protect the commercial? I mean, I feel like every time I drive by here with the Foothill Kids and the college, the center seems to be pretty well-used. So, but moving over to the other center, and the Neighborhood Center, is that vis-à-vis the long-term plan of the university or the college itself? What is...
I know the college is exploring the addition of student housing on-site, as many as 300 units. So they will be looking to neighboring amenities with walking paths based on the proximity to the college and where they will be living. But that is my limited understanding of the master plan of Ventura College that would be in the near future, changing what is here today.
And just for everybody's edification, who controls that master plan?
The Ventura College does. And then they work with the state architect on that.
Because they're their own entire agency.
That's correct.
With their own police force, their own governing...
Well, they lean on us for some services, but they work directly with the state for entitlement with the state architect in this case. We explored looking at it locally, but they elected to go to the state. But they will have our services for water, police, et cetera.
So similar to the Mission Plaza Shopping Center, I guess referring to Councilmember Schumacher, what is...
Yeah, I want to respect the hard work that the G-PAC members put into it, so I want to keep it the way that it is.
I guess, hearing that, I mean, is your, what is your...
Well, if Councilmember Schumacher wants to keep Ashwood and Telegraph the way it is, that's what you're saying, right?
I thought we were talking about Day Road. Are we not talking about...
We're talking about both.
Yeah.
Both.
Yeah. I mean, I think that's essentially why we had all these discussions over the past five years. I mean, these discussions happened over and over again. So with respect, I think, you know, a lot of our members have come to the conclusion that it would be best zoned as Neighborhood Centers.
The only thing, because I was just at the last, you were there, and you heard about the housing that they were gonna put up. And so that, I mean, we're gonna get quite a few, and then right across the street is the other housing, which is affordable housing. That's another, 200 and some units. So we're gonna have 600 units popping up here pretty soon. And that's why I thought it'd be wise to kind of protect that commercial.
Deputy Mayor Halter, did you have?
Just a couple of comments. Is it, there was a point in time where the Neighborhood Center was a great name, where we felt that that was Neighborhood Centers, where people gather. And then we realized that a large part of it could become housing. And there's already gonna be a lot of housing going on around it. So then we started looking at changing those locations to commercial. So I'm not quite sure where our committee ended up on that because it was a confusion at first. And I just know that there's very little commercial really on Telegraph there. If that college is putting in as many housing as we think, those sites could be very important to keep. And I think we could always change it if a proposal came forward that was significant in creating the Neighborhood Center concept that we wanted. But the threat of losing it all to housing is possible with Neighborhood Center.
So are you suggesting what Councilmember Duran is suggesting to keep it commercial?
I would, yes.
Okay. So if we want to weigh in on that, Councilmember McReynolds, you have?
I guess, I kind of want to separate the two, and I want to respect Councilmember Schumacher in terms of, like, do we know anything about the Ashwood Center? I mean, is the CVS closing there?
The CVS is still open. I do want to note that we do run the risk of having issues with our housing element in that these are sites that do allow for housing today. And we don't want to eliminate even more housing in these areas, or at least the potential for housing to achieve our RENA goals.
Yeah, I guess, I look at it, I mean, as to, I think the Day, you know, I just see the use of the Day and Telegraph Center. You know, it was the Fresh &amp; Easy, was that the grocery chain?
Correct.
Yeah, that was there. Yeah. And then, yeah, Norance Market before that. I'm putting that together now. And then the Mavericks Gym is there, which I believe Foothill uses for their PE.
I believe so.
You know, so I could see the Day and Telegraph stay a little bit on the commercial. I, understanding Director Diamond's comments, you know, do we want to leave that flexible? I mean, do you see that?
Sure. I'm open to that.
Okay, so.
So then the recommendation would be Day and Telegraph would go commercial, and then the one on Ashwood and Telegraph would be Neighborhood.
Yes, I'm open to that.
Okay. So is that, we're good? Councilmember Campos, you're shaking your head, no?
I just disagree, but I'm outnumbered, so whatever you decide.
Okay.
And just for clarification, do you need us to vote on the highlight yellow or...
No, it's part of the published packet, so your adoption tonight will effectuate that. We just wanted to highlight it because it has changed since Planning Commission.
And Councilmember Campos, are you good with the highlighted part?
Yes, absolutely. I agree with that.
And so to be clear, the requested change would be that Day and Telegraph would go from mixed use three to commercial.
To commercial.
And then no change to Ashwood and Telegraph.
Correct. Okay. Councilmember Manganay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Just a clarifying question. You guys have answered it a dozen times, I know. Neighborhood Center versus mixed use. I know the mixed use could potentially be all residential. Can you speak to that in terms of Neighborhood Center?
Matt, would you like to speak to that?
Sure. The idea with Neighborhood Center is that a maximum of 40% of the property could be, or the project could be residential. So it would still maintain a strong commercial component, but it would allow some residential. Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. So are we good with that one to move on? And you have what you need from us?
Yes, thank you.
Okay. Did you have more, Councilmember Duran?
No, go right ahead.
Just want to make sure, anybody else want to chime in? Are we...Councilmember Manganay? And another one? Go for it.
Thank you, Madam Mayor.
And then Councilmember Schumacher.
Yeah, I wanted to speak about the CTO. So just so we're aware, this is specifically kind of, we're talking about Harbor and Pierpont. Amy Cherry is right, you know, the simple fact that we're kind of directing staff to conduct a view study on the C-Word Avenue corridor at the same time increasing the height limits to 45 feet seems kind of counterintuitive to me. So 35-foot height, it's still increasing the height in the CTO to 35 feet from 30. But I asked staff, so speaking to the far, currently it's 1.5 far. So hypothetically, it's 35 feet, the CTO, the height, say there's a three-story building there, how much of the Marina Village Shopping Center footprint could, would it be half? On a three-story with 1.5 far?
Yeah, so you do 0.5, 0.5, and 0.5 on each floor if you're just doing a, you know, a simple building.
Sure.
But something to note, the Marina Shopping Center is now designated commercial, so it will be a reduced height than the Neighborhood Center.
Okay. So that's what I would like to propose, is the height limitations in CTO is 35 feet as opposed to 45.
Councilmember McReynolds?
And then referring back to the comments, would you consider allowing the additional five foot that the speaker proposed for architectural articulation so you can get more interesting buildings so that you don't end up with a flat roof?
So my understanding was, what's the current height limitation in that area?
In the CTO zone?
Yeah.
30.
30, so 35... 30, so 35 would be a five-foot increase from the current limitation. And wave your hands, Amy, if that's correct, that's what you're talking about is, and that was my understanding, a 35-foot limitation is still increasing at that five feet from the current limit, so.
What you, what you lose out on is kind of new standards of floor-to-floor heights for commercial. These are commercial-only structures, obviously. There's no residential allowed. So typically, we have 12 to 15 feet on the first floor for new commercial buildings, particularly in like a tourist area. So that's what you would limit if you stuck to that lower height.
And subsequent floors' standard are?
At least 10 for commercial.
At least 10, so.
And then you're talking about, you know, floor-to-floor and the, the floor plate in between obviously adds height as well. Obviously, you could go lower, but that becomes something that is difficult to then put commercials, you know, leases into, or is less desirable commercial.
We also have a higher water table the closer we get to the ocean, and we're noticing a significantly higher water table upon construction than what was previously analyzed. So subterranean elements are probably pretty difficult to obtain when we get closer to the ocean because of that.
And I think that's the argument with the FAR, right? You would still have half of that Marina Village Shopping Center that would not be built upon, or sorry, yeah.
In, in CTO with a 1.5 FAR, if you have three stories, you're pretty much typically developing half of the site, and then half would remain undeveloped.
Correct.
For parking setbacks, et cetera.
Sure.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you, Madam Mayor. The intent in going higher was simply, and Ms. Doman, you addressed part of the reason. But it was also not the intent to take views away from a view district, which I believe Alexandria really is, or Vista Del Mar. And so I'm not quite sure from the line of sight if, what the difference is between 35 and 45 other than 10 feet. So, so I'm not quite sure. If that takes away the views on Vista Del Mar, then I think I'd be concerned about that.
Well, you know, obviously, we anticipate doing a view study where we would establish very specific protected views. Right now, it's very open-ended, and so we would be able to establish the exact view that needs to be preserved. So we'd have actual surveyed points that would say, okay, these are the lines that you cannot go within to protect specific views from specific viewpoints, right?
Yeah.
And so, you know, regardless of what the height limitation is, with those studies in place and those protected view sheds in place, you would then have to adjust your building, for example, stepping it back further and having some of that, you know, empty land in the front of the building, for example, to accommodate view corridors. So there's definitely an adjustment. And then also, obviously, with that limited FAR, you may only have that maximum height on a small portion of the lot and have a much bigger footprint on the first floor, for example. And that's typically what we would see with such a limited FAR.
And finally, appreciate that, because I'm looking at especially Harbor with, currently with a lot of fast food because it's so close to the freeway. But if that was all at 45, for instance, would that take all those views away? That would be a big concern. But I think that from what you just said, it would be scattered. I think seeing elements, whether they be turrets or some pitch roofs, one of the problems we've had is we so dictated the height to things that we end up with nothing but square boxes. It would, the first thing to go is anything that adds interest to that building. And we were encouraging the wrong thing. So if the view corridors start addressing the protection of the height, I have a feeling that Ms. Cherry probably knows what would happen, how much view would go away if that whole stretch became 45 feet tall. But if the view corridor addresses that to make it not one solid block of, of that height, then I could probably go with that. So I'm not quite sure, without that data, it's really hard to make that decision.
So as Burr had stated earlier, we can include the, the view study into the local coastal program land use plan, so that we have that all done at the same time.
Okay.
And that would enable, so basically, none of this would apply in CTO until that local coastal program land use plan is certified by the California Coastal Commission. So including that together would address that issue. And then further, every project would be evaluated on a case-by-case basis as well.
So for the reasons you stated first thing, we could leave it where it's at and then do the coastal land use and see, apply the corridors, view corridors, to see if it's blocking views from that, that bluff, and then adjust accordingly, is what I'm hearing.
Correct. And I think that's where council was going when we endorsed the land use element back in March. We had this discussion at that time, looking at 35 or 45, and knowing that a view corridor study was on the horizon in conjunction with the local coastal program, the council endorsed the 45 feet at that time for the CTO land use designation.
Councilmember Mangone?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I just want to kind of reiterate the, the kind of the concern and the feedback I'm hearing from the public, it's obviously not just Amy Cherry, but there is real concern with, you know, increasing the heights significantly in the CTO, especially when you're talking about her. I was using the, kind of the FAR and the, the surface area of the, of the Marina Village just kind of for reference. But in Pierpont, or, I'm sorry, for Seaward Avenue in particular, so you can just imagine that, those heights along that corridor. So if it could be 40, then I think it would be some, at least some type of compromise.
Councilmember McReynolds?
I could support that. I think that gives you the commercial heights and the architectural articulation that we're looking for.
Sure, and still reducing the height from the existing 45. Okay, thank you.
So we're going 40 now?
So, and it does what Councilmember McReynolds said, we still have the height for the lower, the first floor? Higher first, yeah.
Yeah, it would just limit, you know, architectural projections, and we can also make exceptions for that as well, to allow for creativity in architecture and deal with that through the implementation plan, which is like zoning in the coastal zone.
And it would still include the view corridor?
Yeah, we would still include that study and incorporate it with it, so that, with the local coastal program land use plan.
Okay. So are we good with, are we good with that? Okay. So we'll move on and, will we go with that? Councilmember Schumacher?
Just wanted to make sure that we define, want to respect Autism Society in their concerns, so did we add that? Are we good there?
Keely, could you put up slide 40, please? And just, we had anticipated potentially adding this, so just for the record, wanting to have that on the screen.
We good here, friends?
So I had a question, because I thought, so it's a straight ban, not moratorium?
Correct.
And it's conduct a study?
Okay.
And to conduct a study, okay. Councilmember Campos, and then Councilmember McReynolds?
Could I also suggest that we limit it to the major corridors with heavy traffic? For example, Wells Road, Seaward, and Ventura Avenue. The other fast food on the side streets that's already existing.
Yeah, and something to, we wouldn't go back and take away the existing drive-throughs that are today.
Right, exactly.
They would allow to remain, this would just be looking at a study to assess future drive-throughs, and that very well could be a component of that study, looking at it on major arterials versus minor arterial streets.
And it gives the option to potentially do away with drive-throughs, it's not saying that we're doing away with drive-throughs.
That's correct.
Just want to make that clear. Councilmember McReynolds?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. So I don't necessarily have a concern about this, I have a concern about a little bit of where we're going. So if we remember when the '05 general plan, the current general plan was adopted, the iPhone was still two years out. And it completely changed the way we, you know, Amazon, the whole gig economy, you know, in terms of Uber, in terms of, I just, we don't know what we don't know. And, you know, if everybody's going to electric cars, and I'm, again, I'm just using this as an example, and I can send my car in the morning to go to Starbucks, they put a cup of coffee in it, and when I walk out of my car, it's, there's a cup of coffee sitting there. I just, I, we should proceed with caution in terms of when we start projecting 20, 25 years out, in terms of what, you know, how our economy is going to work. So I just, you know, I'm not opposing this, I'm just, as a, as a fair warning, we need to think of a broader picture.
Right, yeah, and that's why I wanted to clarify whether we were straight out banning or just conducting the study. So Councilmember Duran?
I'm good with this proposed option.
Thank you. I think, are we good with it? Okay, we'll move forward. Thank you. Any other input? Did you need clarification on tenant protections? Council, Deputy Mayor Halter, did you want to restate your, what you said about tenant protections?
Just that, I believe it's already in the land use element, and we've already taken action on the land use element, is that correct?
The language is in the environmental justice element, and then also in the housing element, yeah. And that was, as previously stated, it was included in the framework with G-PAC in January 2024.
Okay. It's one thing if they interconnected, but it seems to me that we just don't want to start processes over and over again. And I'd rather spend our time looking for solutions for affordable housing. That's what we're missing.
So what, what's the recommendation, then? Are you asking to?
I'd rather see it in one spot, housing, the housing element.
So they're not exactly the same. The housing element references holding a hearing to discuss tenant protections, which we already did. And then the environmental justice element has some more specific kind of explorer, and I can read them into the record in just a moment.
Keely, could you put up slide 41, please? 41 has policy EJ 9.3, and slide 42 has implementation action EJA 10.
And so 9.3 is consider a variety of efforts to protect renters in Ventura through actions such as just cause eviction and harassment protections, tenant and landlord mediation programs, right of first refusal, rental assistance, and tenant legal counseling.
Should it read renters or rents? Because right now it says rents.
It should read renters.
And it says renters in the actual?
Okay.
Document.
No. It's fine. The next slide?
And so this is the only location of this item that includes anti-displacement plan, develop a plan to halt displacement throughout Ventura, especially on the west side and east side of Ventura. The plan's components can include tenant and landlord mediation programs, right of first refusal, rental assistance, tenant legal counseling, and a rent board to implement the program.
Okay, and excuse my ignorance, but how is that different than how it's written in the housing element?
So in the housing element, there's just a specific requirement that the city explore, and I can pull up the exact language, that the city holds public hearings to explore tenant protections. So it was very general, and just for us to hold a hearing, we did that already, so we've accomplished that goal. This, these two are much broader.
I guess my only thought is, it appears that I just don't want to continue to do this over and over. We have so many issues to decide, and I think the energy expelled on hearing these over and over, I think we've experienced that in the subcommittee, and it's grueling. It's, there's so many things we could be doing with that time, and finding solutions to housing is huge. And there are solutions, and we just got to connect the dots and do it. And I think going back to a lot of old techniques is the only solution to providing surety and certainty to our renters and that comfort. It is, I feel like we're just down, we're on that hamster wheel, and it's never going to end. So I'm afraid of it showing up in too many locations in our general.
Okay. I have Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Campos.
Thank you. So in the spirit of compromise, because it seems like all, you know, what we're doing here is to make sure that we have some direction or at least some policy in regards to tenant protections, what I'm hearing is this is the only place that it's at right now?
Implementation action EJA 10 is a future five-term action, and that is the, the limited action related to that, that is relevant to that policy.
Okay. So I would like to keep both of these exactly where they're at. Again, this is really just making sure that we have this in a, what is it, a 30-year document in regards to, we may not be talking about it now, but at the very least, we have this in some level of discussion future. It may not be in the times that we're here, Deputy Mayor, but at the very least, we can have some direction in ensuring that we're telling our renters that we still care about them and that we will be discussing some level of protections for them. And while we are exhausting our, our time, it is important to acknowledge that some renters are also really tired of moving. So we want to make sure that they have a chance to be able to have some hope in regards to looking at and exploring every, every type of option that we can to be able to help them out.
I'm going to go to Councilmember Campos, and then Deputy Mayor Halter, and then Councilmember Duran.
So I agree with Councilmember Schumacher that it is a long-term document. It won't hurt us to leave this in the document. Again, we have 100 opportunities over the next 25 years to change the document, but giving up on people who are renters right now is what taking this out would do.
I just want, I'm sorry, I just want to clarify, I don't think we have 100 opportunities to change the document.
Four per year, and with a 25, with a 25 life, four per year would be 100 times with the totality of the document.
Okay, thanks for that clarification, just want to make sure that that was clear. Deputy Mayor Halter?
I've got to very respectfully disagree with my colleagues, because there's a bigger picture here. The bigger picture is, none of us want to give up on our renters. A lot of our renters are us, or they're our loved ones, or our family. And it's the only way some of the people, the next generation is able to be here, is having renters. But you can't have renters if you don't have rental property. And so I keep hearing what I believe to be a one-sided conversation, is if we want to continue losing mom and pops, the good, the what I consider some of the best property owners, then let's just keep bringing this up over and over and over and over and over again. And under the guise of we care about our renters, well, see how far that gets you when there's very few homes to rent. We're already there, but I just feel we're cementing into, we're literally cementing the fact that there's mom and pops out there who are divesting right now, and they're going to continue to divest. You know who's going to buy them? It's going to be corporate players. You think they're going to care about any of this? Some of them will, because there's a lot of good players out there. But it's also, that's where you tend to find some of the worst players, too. The mom and pops are a part of our community. They understand that we need, we have to do, provide housing for renters. As a matter of fact, one of the conversations I've had at length is the fact that I'm not alone in providing employee housing, because I'm trying to keep my employees here and not moving to Lancaster and Palmdale, okay? And same, same thing is that we're, as a small property owners, we're more concerned about having somebody who cares about the property and paying the rent on time, and then getting top dollar for, for that, that unit. But you start boxing people in, and people will go places and invest where they're not going to be boxed in, and take their limited investment to Tennessee and Texas and other places. And so I feel that we're, I have heard this so many times in five years already, that it's really, really, really wearing on a lot of people in this community. So it's not about just protecting renters, it's about protecting people who have rental property. It's a synergistic situation, and we need to make sure we protect both. That's where I'm coming from.
Thank you. Councilmember Duran?
So if this was eliminated from, from the general plan, what, what would happen? If this was, we could do this, right? was, we could do this, right?
If the council chose to strike these from the general plan, we would just take no action based on this general plan implementation item.
Because in the, in the housing element, there's, there's something in there that we can always go back to do, right?
We already accomplished what's outlined in the housing element. It would just be something that could come up in the next housing element.
So, or, or if HHS wanted to propose something, they could do that as well?
Yeah, any, any action can be taken outside of the general plan. So even if there's no implementation item and a council wanted to take action on something, it just wouldn't direct our current work plan as is.
Got you. I'm in agreement.
Obviously, we still have some tenant protection items that are still forthcoming to the council as well.
Yeah.
Yeah, thank you. I'm in agreement with Deputy Mayor Halter.
Councilmember Magueney?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Yeah, I think, and speaking as a landlord here in the city of Ventura, I think the verbiage of this is what's getting to people. I have no problem with it being in the general plan. I think it's the perfect spot for something like this, for a statement like this, the guiding document for the next 25 years. I mean, if you just read this first sentence, develop a plan to halt displacement throughout Ventura, especially on the west side and east end of Ventura, I don't see any problems with that statement. So I'm fine with it, with it being in here. It does says can include, it doesn't say must include or shall include. So I'm, I'm fine with it.
Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Schumacher.
Could you go back one slide, just so we can? So, and how are the two? Well, let me, based on what I'm looking at there, and based on what we have approved, what, what are we adding?
What are we adding in terms of implementation?
So like, we got HRC now. I understand, I think you and I had a conversation, we just started, you had three, maybe more now, come in and use the new, what are we adding that we're not doing right now?
So this, this one is a policy, and so over time, we could consider a variety of efforts, but really, what we'd be adding is the implementation item, if you could go to the next slide, please, of actually creating an anti-displacement plan. This is an action that we would take. We would use that policy as, you know, a lens in which to look at any future action, and we'd say, does, you know, this future action comply with that policy or not, which again is very generalized. So this is the action that we would actually take. This is the item that specifically would occur in order for us to be compliant with our general plan. We would ultimately, within a five-to-10-year timeframe, develop a plan to halt displacement throughout the county, throughout Ventura, with some ideas in there, but not necessarily specific. So that could vary depending on what's happening at the time.
Can we change this?
Absolutely.
Okay, so, so my first question is, there's no, nothing here that says, you know, build more housing would be one of the ways to stop. Like, so could we add the concept of, you know, based on the, the general plan, the conversation we just had about Ashwood Center, you know, adding more housing would deal with some of the halt of displacement?
Absolutely. So we could include in that components, including plans to increase housing production.
Okay. And then it says plans, the plans components can include tenant and landlord mediation programs. Are we doing that today?
Yes.
Okay. Right of first refusal, is that, my basic understanding is that has to do with potentially mobile home parks? There's a right of first refusal with them?
Right of first refusal refers to if your landlord is selling the property, it would allow the tenant to have the first right of refusal to purchase the property. That's something that we considered previously in our tenant protection package, and it was not moved forward.
Okay. Go ahead.
I was just going to say, if it wasn't moved forward, then why is it here?
This is just one component of things that couldn't be included in a plan to halt displacement in the county. Again, it's, I'm sorry, in the city, rather. So there are a variety of things that we're doing today. There are things that we considered at the time of tenant protections, not all of which moved forward. Again, this is a 25-year plan, so we could consider any number of things in the future to help halt displacement in Ventura.
And then rental assistance? Are we doing something with that today?
We do have some rental assistance programs that we've had. We don't have one right now, but there are programs throughout the city and county, and our current funding is out.
So, and then we're doing tenant legal counseling?
Yes. Through the, through the expanded HRC contract, yes. And something to consider is perhaps striking the last sentence of the policy, of the implementation action, as it leaves it more open-ended for other mechanisms in the future when we pick this up, if we do in 2030, to explore beyond what is written here, if that's at the discretion of the council.
Okay, I'm going to ask you to step in your time machine. And what are you expecting? You said in 2027, you're expecting new guidelines regarding the new Rena, the new housing element from the state, from HCD?
Yes, absolutely.
Okay, and what are you, are you hearing anything in terms of what HCD might be requesting? Because a lot of the tenant protections around stabilization that we had in the current housing element was coming from HCD. They wanted to see it, like, they were, if you were going to get a certified housing element, these programs were going to, you were going to look at these. Are you hearing anything of what?
Not specifically.
In general?
Well, in general, the state has continued to pass housing legislation, SB 79, just last week getting signed. So there is a continuing trend at this point to take steps to encourage or, and/or require more housing in communities. How that plays out in the next round of, of the housing elements, we don't know, but HCD certainly is, is asking for things that are more and more specific. But specifically, we don't know, and I think HCD doesn't know at this point.
Just because we're still two years out, probably?
Yeah, we're still a few years out.
Okay.
There's still people who haven't certified their housing elements right now.
Redondo Beach. So I, I guess, knowing that we're still going to be dealing with this on it, is there a way to clean this language up to make it more palatable for everyone in terms of what we're already doing? You know, the, the plans component can include continuing, you know, tenant protections, you know, or tenant, landlord mediation, you know, because there's got to be a budget commitment from this council to do those things, right? Because we signed a three-year contract?
That's correct. So, I mean, again, if we strike the second sentence, then we could address it five to 10 years from now. Again, depending on HCD's guidance, depending on what our housing element says, it will be a different housing element at that time, then we could craft what those components could be based on standard practice at that time.
Okay, I'm going to leave it up to my colleagues to discuss that particular part of it. I'm going to put on my District Five hat, why the east end in particular versus, yeah, Olive, yeah, or, I mean, I, I kind of get the west side, I'm not trying to make any generalizations. Is there something on the east side that I'm not aware of? Like, why the east side is being?
I believe based on it being the environmental justice section, those were the areas where they felt this was particularly needed.
So is that more sadicoy than the east side?
Right, no, and I had the same question. I was just wondering why, rather than just say in Ventura or throughout Ventura like you have it, and not have to specifically point?
And we can. We can absolutely just leave it as develop a plan to halt displacement throughout Ventura, period, and leave the rest up to the makers of that plan and the council at that time.
I would be okay with that, just throughout Ventura. I don't want to point out any specifics. Councilmember Campos, I know you've been patiently waiting, so go ahead.
So I, I would ask, Councilmember McReynolds asked you to add into this build more housing, and we are talking about environmental justice areas. So I would ask that we put build more housing that will house people, or somehow you'll have to figure out the wording, but for people who live at or below the poverty level. So the federal poverty level far exceeds our extremely low-income housing, but it doesn't usually reach what we call affordable housing. So if there was a way in the environmental justice element to say people who are living in these environmental justice neighborhoods at or below the poverty level is who we're building housing for.
Do you want to separately add, since it's a little bit different than halting displacement from housing, do you want to add an additional implementation item that says incentivize the construction of housing for people at or below the poverty line?
That would be wonderful.
Sounds good. Is everybody okay with that?
Yeah.
Yeah, okay.
Thumbs, I see three thumbs.
Were you finished, Councilmember Campos? Okay.
Four thumbs.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Great, thank you. The, I think, just in looking at this, that calling this anti-displacement plan, I'm not sure I buy into that comment. I, in the standpoint that, when I look at people who are being displaced out of the city, it's not just people that our rent's gotten too high, or they just can't afford it to begin with, mainly because they can't find a job to pay enough to be able to live here. So it's also about job creation. And then second, thirdly, is, there's also a lot of people who own houses, barely own houses, like what happened in 2008, where I saw so many of those people barely holding on to the middle class, falling back and having to give up their homes. So that's, anti-displacement can be homeowners, it could be renters. It, it just seems like, and I also want to know, I know if people move away from here, it's because they either got priced out or because they're joining their grandkids in another state. That's what I see most of the time. So I'm just looking at, other than those two things, what is the displacement ratio right now? Do we know how many? I knew from research I did earlier that at best, there's 50, what do you call, no fault evictions a year in a city our size. So if you're talking people who are being pushed out because everyone's trying to raise their rent as high as they can because the market will bear it, I'm not sure that that's the case. Okay? So, so anti-displacement sounds like, because of, to me, it sounds like because of greedy people owning property, they're raising their rent so high that people are being displaced. And I think that sends the wrong message. I think the message is getting people who have rentals and people who rent, I love the fact about mediation programs and getting people together, but that only works to its fullest extent if you use people locally. If you talk to the people who own property locally to form those relationships with the people who are renting, a lot can happen through that sort of synergy. So I like that aspect. But anti-displacement seems heavy, heavy to me.
So maybe rethinking that name, but I'm going to go to Councilmember Schumacher, because I skipped over him, so apologies.
So I just want to make sure that, and I agree with you, Deputy Mayor, I think there's, I, I think anti-displacement, I agree with you in the, in the aspect of we need to look at both sides on both the renters and the, and the property owners, because what, what I think you're, when we say tenant protections, there's this like leaning of bias towards tenants, and that's really not, because it's in the name, right? And that's, I essentially, I love that we are including tenant and landlord mediation programs. I think that's, we're in the same spirit in a way that like, how do we make this work so that way our, our tenants are protected, our renters are quote-unquote protected? Because there is a general power dynamic that's very different, right? Because again, you are, you are working with the landlord that owns the property, and so we are making sure that the tenants have some level of balance in the discussion when they are trying to advocate for themselves. And so I think the reason why I want to keep, and I'm okay with, I mean, again, this is a council of compromise, I'm okay with removing the last sentence, even especially on the west side and east side, because we do want to make sure that it's throughout Ventura, just as long as the spirit is there, that we are essentially looking out for both the renters and also our property owners without necessarily trying to displace either. I mean, I don't want renters to, to leave, and I also don't want property owners to leave.
So maybe can we wordsmith simply by saying, develop a plan that includes tenant and landlord to halt displacement throughout Ventura, something of that. You guys can finish it.
What about neighborhood stabilization plan? Develop a plan to halt displacement of residents throughout Ventura?
Okay, thank you. Thumbs up on that one? I'm sorry? Oh, and the slide, the, the previous slide, does that mean?
The tenant protection policy?
Yeah, that's the one that, it's, we were really actually looking at 10, because that's the one that has the meat and potatoes, and that's the one that actually does something versus this one, so.
That's the action, this is the policy.
This is the policy, so.
Can you just reflect?
Yeah, how do you reflect?
And so we can keep it at tenant protections, consider a variety of efforts to protect rents in Ventura, period.
Could we?
Renters, sorry, that was a typo.
Thank you. Renters in Ventura. And again, that adjusts over time, that's going to be something that's reflected in the housing element. It's up to you.
Councilmember Duran?
Could we change it to tenant and housing provider protections?
At the discretion of the council, sure.
Housing provider or property owner?
Either one. Yeah, property owner's fine.
Yeah, I like the inclusion of that. What was that, Councilmember?
Oh, okay. And so the policy will remain as is? Consider a variety of efforts to protect rents in Ventura and include the rest, or do you want it to just read in Ventura, period?
In Ventura, period. We good with that? Thumbs up? No thumbs up?
So for the record, it'll be tenant and property owner protections. Consider a variety of efforts to protect renters in Ventura, stop.
Okay, so now my, my brain goes to, well, if we're including property owners, how are we going to mesh that in the sentence?
One thought, if I may?
Yes.
Is and retain property owners.
Protect renters and retain property owners in Ventura.
Yep.
Housing providers.
We want to go back to housing providers.
Okay, so tenant and housing provider protections, consider a variety of efforts to protect renters and housing providers in Ventura, period.
And retain housing providers.
And retain housing providers.
In Ventura. Okay. Are we good with that? Thumbs up? Okay, we got thumbs up? Okay. Any other, or are we done with this so that we can go to the vote?
I don't have any others.
Thank you.
I have some clarifying.
Okay. Councilmember Campos, did you, no, you're good? Okay. Okay.
I just wanted to clarify 10, 10-2 and 10-10, those, you said those were eliminated?
That's correct.
Okay. And then 6-7 permit, project permitting?
6-7, that is slide 36. We have some suggested language to address that concern.
Okay.
So for LU 6.7, project permitting, it would go from provide efficient permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of commercial and employment uses, and change that to strive to provide world-class, efficient permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of commercial and employment uses.
Is that something you were going to put up?
Keely, slide 36, please.
I, I have an issue with world-class, not that I'm, I don't know what that means. I mean, I'm happy with provide efficient permitting, so on it, I mean.
Strive to provide efficient permitting and transparent development.
I would be happier with maybe 21st century, you know, in terms of, well, just, I mean, yeah, yeah, just bringing, yeah, technology.
Strive to provide optimum efficient permitting?
Yeah.
And transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to the expansion of residential uses.
I think it's this body's job to make sure that you are getting the funding to implement, you know, as new technologies come, come forward, and, you know, I think that a policy like that would at least force us to consider. like that would at least force us to consider it.
Um, how about strive to provide optimum technology to implement efficient permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of commercial and employment uses? Do we want technology in there?
I'm not opposed to it, I don't know if anybody else. Yeah, maybe innovation, yeah.
How about strive to provide innovative, um, and efficient permit, permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of commercial and employment uses?
Yes. That's good. Okay. So we'll move, did you have any more? Sorry, Councilmember McReynolds, did you have more?
I guess would that carry on to fifteen-point-four, fifteen-fourteen?
Slide thirty-eight, Keely?
Just if we could reflect the similar, similar language.
And city is friendly to expansion.
That's all I have.
Yeah, same thing with the world-class.
Yeah.
Change that up. Yeah. Okay. So if we're good with those, Councilmember Compos, you're good?
And for the record, I just wanted to clarify Councilmember McReynolds' comments regarding public comment letter that we got regarding PFS, forgive me for all my notes here, uh, ten-point-two and ten-point-ten. There is no longer a ten-point-ten, uh, that's on attachment G, page forty-five, and the letter referred to a former version of ten-point-two. There is now a new version of ten-point-two, which speaks to water distribution system efficiency, for, just for the record.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Uh, Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, I, after you read these all back to us, I would just, in, in honor of all the work that Deputy Mayor Halter and Councilmember McReynolds, I, I would just, would like them to make the first and second, because they work so hard.
No, I was going to jump in and do it. I, I'm totally, yes, in support of that, so. So if staff is ready to read it back to us, I know it was a lot, but we'd like to get through with this.
Okay, so, um, the first change is to add Chumash photos where Chumash history is referenced. The second is in LU A thirteen, it will read as explore revitalization of the public parking garage adjacent to the pier to support expanded tourism amenities. Number four of LU A thirteen will read add minimum and maximum densities to the specific planned zoning districts. We would add an, uh, implementation item number five under LU A thirteen that says, consider adjusting parking requirements in the downtown specific plan to match density bonus parking standards. We would change LU six-point-two to read industrial compatibility, require that new large-scale residential projects adjacent to industrial designated land incorporate buffers, setbacks, and/or design features to minimize potential conflicts and support harmonious coexistence. Day and telegraph, um, will be changed from mixed-use-three to commercial. Uh, CTO maximum height will be changed to forty feet. LU A two, uh, twenty-four will be changed to read fast food drive-through ban, conduct a study to examine imposing a ban on new fast food drive-through establishments in Ventura. EJ nine-point-three will be amended to read tenant and housing provider protection, consider a variety of efforts to protect renters and retain housing providers in Ventura. EJA ten will read neighborhood stabilization plan, develop a plan to halt displacement of residents throughout Ventura. We'll also have a new EJ implementation item, the number to be determined, incentivize the construction of housing for people at or below the poverty line. Uh, LU six-point-seven will be amended to read project permitting, strive to provide innovative and efficient permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of commercial and employment uses. LU fifteen-point-fourteen will read residential project permitting, strive to provide innovative and efficient permitting and transparent development processes to ensure the city is friendly to expansion of residential uses.
Did you mention LU six-point-two to go back to original?
That is the original language she read, and we also heard, um, adopting the View Corridor Study with the coastal, uh, local, or local coastal program land use plan.
Thank you.
I would make the motion to accept these changes.
Uh, your mic.
The comments from Kathleen Wheeler to just incorporate or correct in the vision statement, and I just emailed them to you, she heard us and emailed them to me.
Can you read that? Do you want us to read it in? I think we should decide on the language now, so I'm happy to bring it up and discuss it.
Does she email it to everyone?
I can. I don't know, I, yeah.
I know the vision, the vision statement was heavily analyzed and studied by the GPAC and then endorsed by council, so it would serve all of us to, if we're going to consider new language, to have that vetted here at this eve, at this moment.
Just forward it.
She had asked a number of questions, um, but we should discuss, I think the key phrase that I heard was just adding the urgency.
Urgency.
Yes.
Um, and so we can include that, if you go to, um, the last statement in the vision plan, um, it says, we will anticipate environmental challenges and address them in a way that maintains the identity, sustainability, and vitality of our community, ensuring a healthy future for all residents. Um, my suggestion would be that we say, we will anticipate environmental challenges and urgently address them in a way that maintains the identity, sustainability, and vitality of our community, ensuring a healthy future for all residents.
Yes, I'm good with that.
Yeah. Yeah.
You guys okay with that?
Not really.
No? Okay.
I, I just emailed them to all of them.
Can I hear?
Why?
Why?
Just that, that statement was heavily debated by the, the general plan, the GPAC.
Which is, yeah.
In honor of all that work.
We'll just keep it as-is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, we'll just keep it as-is. All right, so having everything that you read, you all captured that, I think we should...
I would like the recommendation slide put on the screen, Keely, slide thirty-three.
Thank you.
And Mayor, just real quick, so that the clerk has a good record, because there was a little back and forth between Ms. Diamond, Ms. Clenze, and then a subsequent follow-up, it may be helpful just to read the entire changes back in one, in one fell swoop.
She did.
She just did it.
Do you want me to read it again?
I guess, well, because I think there was something Ms. Clenze had added.
It was adopt the View Corridor Study with the LCP, LUP. I can read the whole thing again, though.
No.
So it's, it's only, so that, that was the only change, other than what Ms. Diamond read straight through?
That's correct.
Right, and, yeah, that was part of the list, but we just did not mention it, so she was making sure that it was part of it. Yeah. It was in addition to...
It is in addition to what Ms. Diamond had stated, it wasn't a clarification or a correction.
That's what I, I, I understood it to be in addition.
It's, it's really just a clarification of when we're doing an implementation item, so it's already an implementation item in the, um, in the plan.
So the only text changes are what Ms. Diamond read it?
That's correct. There would be no actual text change to adopt the View Corridor Study with the local coastal program land use plan, we're just getting direction to actually do that.
Right.
Okay, and I guess maybe just worth looking at the clerk, if the clerk, um, believes he can capture that.
Or do you?
I can send it all over to him right now.
Okay. All right, so with that, Mr. City Clerk, or?
There's a, I think there's a motion?
There's a motion in a second.
In a second. I second.
Yes.
There's a motion in a second. I'd like to call for a vote, please.
Thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Duran on the motion?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Compos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez-Palacios?
Can you read it? No, I'm just kidding, yes.
Seven eyes and the motion carries.
And, uh, we are going to take a five-minute break. We'll be right back.
Get Duran, too.
Get Duran, too.
No, really, I feel like I'm having hot flashes and I'm dying. I don't know why, I'm sweating profusely.
We will continue our... With our agenda. So, thank you, everyone, again, for item number seven. Great work on your feedback and input. Moving on to item number eight, the amendments in adoption of the 2025 State Building Standards Code. Staff is requesting that this item be continued. In order for us to continue that item to November 4th, I will need a motion and a second for that.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second to move or to continue item eight to November 4th?
Thank you, Mayor, I missed the motion. The motion maker.
The motion maker was McReynolds. Oh, Councilmember Schumacher and seconded by Councilmember McReynolds.
Thank you, Mayor, and this item was adequately noticed. So, the motion is to continue the item to the November 4th, 2025 meeting.
Yes.
On the motion, Councilmember Duran is absent. Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Six eyes, and the motion carries.
Okay, thank you. Onto our formal items, item number nine, resolution to adopt the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. We have staff presentation. Whenever you're ready, you can go ahead and take it away.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council. I'm Logan Babcock. I'm an Environmental Services Specialist with our Public Works Environmental Sustainability Division. I'm joined at the table by Rachel Diamond, our Community Development Director, Maruha Klenze, our Assistant Community Development Director, and Matt Maddox from Rincon Consulting. Today, we're bringing forward to the Climate Action and Resilience Plan for adoption. So, before I get started, I just want to provide a quick reminder. Today's goal is to adopt the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. This council has seen the Climate Action and Resilience Plan a number of times. So, today is the final piece to adopt. Today, we'll cover the background of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, the adoption process that it's subject to. We'll review the development of it over the years. We'll go into the priority action plans. And then, we'll provide an implementation update and then finish with our recommendation. So, from here on out, to save us a significant amount of time, I'll refer to the Climate Action and Resiliency Plan by its acronym, the CARP. Essentially, in short, the CARP establishes a shared vision for climate action here in Ventura. It aligns with the general plan. It builds on and implements the Active Transportation Plan. And it references the Hazard Mitigation Plan in the adaptation sections. The CARP is a short-range plan, five to 10 years out, that proposes focused solutions to reduce our greenhouse gas emissions while advancing our related goals associated with community resilience and climate adaptation. As the city's greenhouse gas reduction program, the CARP inventories our current greenhouse gas emissions, establishes reduction measures, and then assesses the effectiveness of these measures at meeting our state targets. The CARP also identifies vulnerabilities from climate change hazards and defines specific policies and actions for the city to implement in order to address those vulnerabilities. And there are 75 strategies included in the CARP that address both greenhouse gas reductions and climate resilience. And now, Maruha will talk about the adoption process.
Thank you, Ms. Babcock. Looking at the adoption process with the CARP, it was endorsed in February, and we have been moving at lightning speed as if it were adopted at that time with the priority actions directed from council and the ad hoc that was formed. We had planned originally to include it with the general plan, but decided to have it be a standalone document for a few different reasons. One, it's a shorter-term document, five to 10 years. It's a guiding document that allows us to kind of play with it more, maybe amend it more, create a flexibility with it that would not be beholden to the four times a year. And with that, we can amend it as many times at the discretion of council. And it also supports the implementation, an implementation action of the general plan, our policy specifically, Land Use 12.1, which talks about the Ventura CARP, and Land Use 12.2 Priority CARP action plans. So, as a forecast for future actions, this is the next action already meeting deliverable. You have an adoption of a CARP here tonight. And that concludes my portion of the presentation.
Thanks, Maruha. So, there's been a lot of engagement and work that's gone into the CARP over the years. This is a quick overview of its development. We've had multiple opportunities for input from the public, and we've received a lot of input from our community members. We've done surveys and in-person and virtual workshops and focus groups and received hundreds of public comments on the drafts of the CARP that have been addressed line by line during its development. We've engaged climate groups, our business-facing groups, and groups representing our disadvantaged community areas to ensure that we receive diverse viewpoints at various intervals during the CARP's development. A core group of community development and environmental sustainability staff have worked with the consultant to really drive the development of the CARP. But each city department that's affected by the CARP's implementation was included and provided direct feedback on their applicable sections throughout its drafting. So, as I've mentioned, and as is displayed on the board here, staff has brought the CARP to council a few times in the past years as an independent item so that it could have a dedicated discussion. And we brought it to council first in July of 2023, and it received its first endorsement. Along with that endorsement, council requested a revised greenhouse gas assessment to align with updated state policy and for the priority strategies identified in the CARP to be expanded and be more actionable and implementable for staff. So, our city staff, our consultant team, and our community groups worked together to revise the draft and bring those priority action plans to life. We brought those, the final draft that resulted from that process, to City Council in February of this year. Council endorsed this final draft plan and the expanded strategies, which we are now calling the priority action plans. And with this endorsement, City Council requested staff to begin implementation ahead of this adoption today. And I want to mention that since City Council made implementing the CARP a focus area of one of your strategic priorities, you will receive implementation updates through the Strategic Priority Update Process and those presentations. So, as a review, our priority action plans, there are a number of the strategies in the CARP that were selected because they fulfill a number of criteria, some of which including they align with a city priority or a state initiative. They have significant greenhouse gas reduction or climate adaptation potential. They've got support from the community, or it's a foundational strategy. So, executing it is important for the successful implementation of other CARP strategies. So, the priority action plans include a lot of detail, including which actions which city departments should take in the short, medium, and long term. That goes 10 years out. And it labels specifically which city departments will lead and are involved in each of those implementation actions. The draft priority action plans, I think I mentioned this, the draft priority action plans, they were reviewed with community partners during their refinement, and the relevant city departments were involved in their formation. So, everyone has an idea of the implementation coming their way. And I want to remind council that the CARP is ultimately a short-range planning document aimed at providing a path for the next five to 10 years. And again, since the council's strategic priority has a focus of CARP implementation, these priority action plans align with that timing, and you'll receive implementation reporting through that process. Ultimately, to reduce emissions and make Ventura more resilient is a community-wide effort that the city hopes to lead, but there is still a lot of burden of action on community members and residents. The city hopes to alleviate and support residents through that process by implementing the programs outlined in the CARP. And also, the council's strategic priorities reinforce the importance of those programs, and we're happy to see that alignment. As Maruha mentioned earlier, and we talked about this on the development slide, this document has been reviewed and endorsed by City Council multiple times. And tonight is kind of that last step. We have begun working on this implementation since February, and this is going to operate as a little implementation update for everyone. So, since February, we have formed our Green Team, is what we're calling it. And this is a team of city staff, all of which are more involved in the CARP's development and provided feedback on it during its draft phases. But these are city staff who are working in positions implementing those CARP programs and who are able to report out on progress of those programs. We gathered for a kickoff. This team is facilitated by environmental sustainability staff, but it reaches out through all of the city's staff divisions and departments. We gathered for our kickoff earlier this summer where we introduced our reporting mechanism. We onboarded all of our Green Team members and explained our roles and responsibilities and really the expectations with the group. To track and record updates, the Green Team uses a mechanism very similar to that used by city staff collecting council's strategic priority updates. So, it's a familiar setting and a familiar process for staff to upload updates to. Green Team meetings, we have a combination of one-on-one check-ins with ES staff and Green Team members, and also big, full sit-down meetings. And they operate a little bit like this. We review the CARP strategies assigned to each individual staff member, the short-term priorities, strategies, or, sorry, the short-term actions in the priority action plans. And then, we look ahead at the medium and long-term actions and talk about what's necessary to ensure the successful implementation of those long-term goals. So, moving forward, the Green Team will continue to work on the short-term actions. That's one to three years out in the priority action plans, while we look ahead at what's needed for the successful long-term implementation. And as we collect these updates, they're dispersed in a few different ways. So, I've mentioned that we compile them as part of the Strategic Priority Update Process. So, council receives those on a quarterly basis. And also, these updates are synced up to a public CARP website that will go live following the adoption of the CARP. The CARP ad hoc met this past August to receive an implementation update as was requested during the February endorsement. At this meeting, attending members were able to provide feedback on the CARP website and discuss how the city can help encourage and incentivize community-wide electrification. And I'm happy to report we're working on this and related programs as laid out in the CARP's priority action plans. And we do have a date set for the next ad hoc meeting. By following the direction of the document that's been endorsed, we're able to help push these programs forward. So, the recommendations in the staff report specifically align with a strategic priority of climate change and environmental stewardship and effectively is the action item for the focus area of implementing the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. And I've mentioned this a few times, but the Strategic Priority Update Process will really function as a CARP update avenue as the CARP is a specific focus area for the strategic priority. And the next update that council will receive for that is coming on November 4th. All right, and that leads to the recommendation. Apologies if I went a little quickly, but at this time, staff is asking council to find the preparation and the adoption of the Climate Action and Resilience Plan, exempt from CEQA, and to adopt a resolution approving the Climate Action and Resilience Plan. Thanks.
Thank you, staff, for your presentation. Councilmembers, any questions? Councilmember Campos?
Actually, I don't have a question as much as wanted to express gratitude for all the years you worked on it. And this year in particular, Logan and Lars and Joe Yanner did a tremendous job pulling it all together to come tonight. So, thank you for that.
Yes, thank you for that. Councilmember McReynolds?
I'm always impressed with something minor, but you're all sitting there with your water bottles. I mean, you are walking the walk, you know? It is part of it. It really is a mindset. And just seeing all four of you right there with your water bottles definitely reflects that you, you know, you were adopting the mindset. I do want to invite the public. Our next meeting is... Anyways, we do have our next meeting on Wednesday, December 2nd, for the City Council ad hoc. I would invite everybody out there. We did get an opportunity to preview the new website. When does that go live, is my first question?
Great question. I wish it were tomorrow. It should happen pretty quickly. I've got a meeting on Thursday to kind of dot the i's and cross the t's. And I'm hoping by end of next week, end of the month is pretty much our goal. Yeah. And we'll, sorry, we'll announce via an Instagram post and our normal social media avenues. So, we'll spread the word that it's live.
And then, we'll see if the Assistant City Manager is paying attention. I believe she's bringing an item forward on the Strategic Priority Update. When is, when are we going to get that?
Thank you, Councilmember, for the record. Carleen Saxon, Assistant City Manager, November 4th. So, your next meeting.
That'll be, okay, that'll be the update, okay. And then, my final comment is I'm sure we're going to have some public speakers. And, you know, I do appreciate that they keep us honest out there watching this and making sure that we're moving it forward. So, thank you very much.
Thank you. If no other council comments, then we'll go ahead and recognize public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. We have three speakers on the CARP. Speakers will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Karba Ekli, followed by Donald Price and Spencer Noren.
Good evening, everyone, again. I debated going home, but this is like the singular most pivotal issue of like our generation. And so, I thought it was important that I stay and comment. First off, Logan, Lars, y'all are a powerhouse, great work on this. I ask the council to throw your like full support behind this effort and what is needed to do this for the city. It's one thing to just say something. I could say right now, I'm going to lose 50 pounds. But am I going to hire a personal trainer? Am I going to get a gym membership? Am I going to actually work out? Am I going to do any of that? We can say we're going to be carbon neutral. We can say and write anything. We can endorse it, we can adopt it, but we have to put money behind it. We have to do it. We have to do it to the city's portfolio of buildings. We have to do it to the cars and the buildings that are owned by residents. Like, we have to be a resilient city for the next, for what is... We've already hit tipping points for a lot of things. The West Side's almost burned down in the past. Future, scarier wildfires will come. So, like, this document is so important. I'm so happy for the work that they've done. But this is where the rubber meets the road, and there's a lot more work that comes in adopting this. So, we got to buckle up and do it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker is Donald Price.
Madam Mayor, Council, I'm Don Price. I'm a retired environmental engineer. I'm here to support approval of the CARP. I did want to point out that my two letters asking for information about the emission reduction estimates in the CARP were never answered, saying I never got any information on that, which I think is sort of a bad form. But we're past that now. We're done talking, we're moving on to action. So, my colleagues and I are going to be watching for action. We're waiting for things to start happening. So, hopefully, that will happen. And you have the advantage of having a great sustainability office with Logan and Joe and Lars to keep this moving. So, I hope you will support them in their efforts to do just that. Thank you.
And our final speaker, Spencer Noren.
Thank you, Ms. McDonald, Mayor, Council, VPD, translation. I wanted to touch on the subject I'm very excited about, the Climate Action Resilience Plan, but more ultimately about urban forestry and the talk of putting in the CARP a replacement policy. We've talked in the past about two trees, three trees, five trees, 10 trees. I've done some research on it, and I'd love to read some of it to you right now, hopefully to implement into right now. Also, going along with some of our performance metrics, which say number of trees planted in disadvantaged neighborhoods, and also tree canopy in disadvantaged neighborhoods. While I'm all for disadvantaged neighborhoods, I feel like we've almost said that redundantly twice on page number 28. I'd love to have that amended to number of trees planted in neighborhoods in general, and then also have a disadvantaged portion there. And if you look down to, more into EH15, Increased Tree Canopy, there's a star that says Priority Strategy, which seems to be one of our three priorities, which I'm very excited about. But looking at the implementation action, I don't see where it says what the action would be if a tree was removed and then putting in something that could keep people accountable moving forward over the next five or 10 years. So, something I kind of came up with briefly would be suggested for language for the inclusion of the CARP in the urban forestry policy. For any public tree removal, the city shall ensure placement of planting at least three new climate-resilient trees for each large mature tree removed within the public right-of-way or the parkway. Replacement trees should be a minimum of 24-inch box size and selected from the trees approved climate-resilient tree species list. The tree replacement program shall be tracked annually with reports, yada, 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 going into some of your results. So, I'd love to have implemented the three-to-one, or five-to-one, if you want, in that instance, and also the minimum of 24-inch box. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And those were all the speakers, correct?
Thank you, Mayor. That concludes public comment.
Thank you. I'll bring it back to council for deliberation, and motion is required for action on this item. Any deliberation? If not, can I get a motion?
I'll make a motion, approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. So, we have a motion and a second?
Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven eyes, the motion carries.
Thank you. Appreciate your work. Thank you. Okay, moving on to item number 10, the construction contract with R2Build on Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition Improvements, Project WA 20-1177. We will have staff presentation whenever they are ready. We are 15 minutes out, but we're going to need a motion if we go past 10, or before we get to past 10.
So moved.
Oh, wait, no. I was just talking out loud. Was my mic on? We moved nothing.
Was there a motion to extend the meeting?
That's what we were, I need a motion to extend the meeting if we go past 10.
Yeah, I moved the, extend the meeting past 10.
Deputy Mayor, Deputy Mayor Halter seconded.
Okay, on the motion to extend, Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Placios?
Yes.
Seven ayes, the motion carries.
Thank you. And staff, if you are ready to go, it's your turn.
Okay, Mayor and council members, my name is Greg Knutson. I'm the Principal Civil Engineer with the Engineering Design Section, Public Works. Joining me tonight are Peter Shade, Assistant Public Works Director and City Engineer, and Will Trax, Associate Engineer. We're here tonight to present the SCADA improvements award of construction contract. SCADA, or Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition, is a computer-based system for gathering and analyzing real-time data to monitor and control equipment that interfaces with critical and time-sensitive materials or events. Ventura Water relies upon a SCADA system to remotely monitor and control the water and wastewater systems throughout the city. Some of the benefits of a modern SCADA system include collection of real-time status data from valves, motors, and sensors, aggregating real-time operating data, allowing operators to monitor performance system-wide, the ability to troubleshoot and prevent problems within the water and wastewater system, to control select equipment remotely, and shorten response time for malfunction and emergency. The need for the project, the current SCADA equipment used by the city is aging, and many components have become obsolete and outdated. Periodic replacement of this electronic equipment with new or upgraded equipment is required. The project replaces the aging serial radios with Ethernet data radios. Completion of several elements within this project are necessary to provide for the continued reliability of the Ventura Water SCADA infrastructure, and should be implemented soon due to the deteriorating condition of the current equipment. These equipment upgrades will sustain the SCADA system, improve the ability of Ventura Water to provide for ongoing operations, and to maintain and restore service in the case of equipment malfunction or large-scale disaster. Scope of work for the SCADA project consists of installing high-speed wireless data links with redundancy between all Ventura Water plants, water and wastewater, pressure stations, and the city yard. And this is going to be conducted at approximately 94 separate sites throughout the city. Scope of work includes replacing the aging serial radios with Ethernet radios for water pressure stations, tanks, booster pump sites, and wastewater lift stations. There's also the substantial replacement or new construction for three pressure recording stations and apartment work. On April 25th, 2025, council rejected the previous bid for the SCADA improvements. On September 23rd, 2025, staff received one bid for this project. The engineer's estimate was $583,000. The single bid received from R2 Build is $1.275 million, which is 119% above the engineer's If awarded tonight, its anticipated construction will require 180 days. The contract award would occur tonight. Construction notice to proceed would be anticipated for January of 2026 and project completion in July of 2026. Proposed funding for the contract and contingency of $1.4 million will be from Fund 1072 CIP And the recommendations of the staff report support the strategic priority of infrastructure and the focus area of continuing to maintain and improve condition of roads, water, storm drains, parks, municipal facilities, and main street moves infrastructure. The recommendations before you tonight include approving the SCADA improvement projects and determining that it is categorically exempt from the California Environmental Quality Act, authorizing the city manager to execute agreement with R2 Build in the amount of $1,274,500, and also authorizing the city manager to execute future amendments to the subject agreement up to a total maximum contingency of $128,000. And with this, that concludes our presentation.
Thank you, staff. Council, any questions? Councilmember Schumacher, followed by Councilmember Manganay.
Thank you, Mayor, and thank you, staff, for your presentation. Mr. Knutson, can you go to slide five for me, please? Can I just get an understanding, just remind me what was the previous bid that we rejected?
The previous bid was slightly over $1 million that we rejected last spring.
So, it was the similar, around the similar ballpark?
It's, the current bid is approximately $200,000 higher.
Okay, and can you, was it on the recommendation of staff for us to reject the previous bid?
It was at a previous staff report to reject that bid, and we attempted to rebid the project, engage additional contractors, and also optimize the project slightly by changing out the radio types to something more modern. With that, we still only received one bid. We've outreach to other contractors that pulled documents, and for various reasons, they've indicated that they could not bid on the project.
Help me understand these various reasons, because we see this a lot when we try to go out for bids and we only receive one, and now we're forced to accept one bid. So, help me understand, like, what is, what are we not doing as a city? Or what can we do more that we can attract better contractors that will provide us with bids?
Yeah, we've attempted at a staff level to conduct outreach when we advertise projects to all known contractors in the region that do this particular type of work. So, we were, we outreach to approximately 10, eight to 10 contractors. We also outreach to what are called plan rooms, which is where contractors go to collect information about various projects that are available. We outreach to 10, 10 plan rooms, and also five data consolidators, which create databases of projects that are coming out to bid and publicize that with their subscribers. So, in doing that, we've attempted to broaden our reach. Unfortunately, it is a challenge for contractors, large and small, to work in a public sector environment. Our contracts are significantly more complicated than private sector contracts, and it's kind of just the nature of the work. We've very struggled to get contractors to bid on projects at times.
So, it's not our amount, because clearly, we're getting 119% over what we had estimated? It's more about our contract as a government entity?
As a government entity, it's very difficult for some contractors, particularly smaller contractors, to do work for us. We have prevailing wage requirements, we have apprenticeship requirements, we have a lot of documentation requirements that go into both preparing for the contract bid and also during the course of the contract. So, it requires the contractor to have a robust back-office type staff to support this type of work environment. And frankly, given the labor market right now, trying to find those people, it's difficult across all businesses to find appropriate staff to expand your business at this point and participate. So, we're seeing less and less bids.
I see you. I just want to ask one more question, okay?
Yeah, yeah.
How far out did we go from Ventura? Did we go all the way to Slow? Like, what's the reach, what's the outreach that we did?
The outreach to plan rooms was basically all of Southern and Central California. Will Trax can probably identify how far we outreach for contractors.
Hi, Will Trax, Associate Engineer. I outreach to multiple contractors. I've called them, I emailed them, I was at least 10, I believe. I spoke to multiple, and they sounded interested. It was just a matter of them placing a bid was not there, unfortunately.
Got it. Mr. AP?
Yeah, Councilmember Schumacher and members of the City Council, I just wanted to also add from...
Can you identify yourself?
Oh, yeah, thank you very much. I just was thinking of that, and then I didn't do it. I'm Charlie Ebling, the Public Works Director. I just wanted to add to everything my staff has just said about how we're going about doing outreach to contractors, and we are actually kind of going above and beyond with a number of these contracts. But also beyond that, just from a public work standpoint and how we're managing our cost estimating and our, such as preliminary cost estimates, engineer's estimates, and looking where we are with bids, we are, we are looking, you know, self-reflective of where we are with doing that kind of estimating, looking at how the markets changed, I think, with inflation and construction costs skyrocketing. I think it's really important that we work with the staff, this is what I'm doing, is working with the staff to, you know, maybe take a reflective look at how our engineer's estimates are being created. Currently, in the last year and a half, we've done 17 projects that have gone out to bid. Of those 17, I've noted that 10 of them, we were somewhat low in our engineer's estimates, and the construction cost was over that. So, doing that kind of analysis and then coming back with the staff and looking at how we're doing engineer's estimates, I think is really important. So, we are taking a look at this, and I just wanted to give you that confidence that we are aware of where the market's going, what the costs are, how they're going up dramatically, and then making sure that we are doing a good job doing our engineer's estimates.
It's just, I, you know, I appreciate that. Thank you for that context. And again, I'm not, I am not questioning your, any of, any of your abilities to be doing your work. My concern is, is that we're given one thing to consider, right? And that really limits our options in regards to how we're moving forward or not. And, and I just wanted to also ask, is, was IT involved in, in, what, in helping us with?
Yeah.
In helping us with what the bid?
Yeah.
Yeah, in helping us with the bid?
Preparing the bid.
In comparing?
Councilmember Schumacher, not directly. We do, we do through plan rooms, electronic plan rooms, all that kind of stuff. We are pretty good at that. So, this outreach for this project was actually fairly extensive. And what I would say is just that the number of contractors in this region is dwindling. We only work with Class A contractors that can do our kind of work. And then also, our municipal code, our charter, and public contract code that we parallel require us to award the contract to the lowest responsive bidder. So, when we, no matter how many bidders we get, even when it's one, we do an analysis to make sure that the bid was responsive, that met all of our, all of our requirements, all the, all the bid bonds, the bid itself, everything was deemed responsive. So, when we get even one responsive bid, well, the council does have the prerogative to reject all bids, but, but when we get one responsive, that's following our charter and our municipal code and paralleling public contract code. Typically, we will award then or recommend that you award to that responsive bid, and this was a responsive bid.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Manganay?
Thank you, Madam Mayor. No, I appreciate my colleagues' questions, and I, and thank you guys for answering so well. Because reading the staff report, you read, you know, there was six contractors that were interested. I think you met with a pre-bid meeting, there was three that showed up. So, yeah, I had the same questions, kind of like, what, what happened in between those, those times? So, I appreciate Mr. Ebling's explanations as well. So, thank you, thank you, guys.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Just one quick question. What is the life of the system expected to be, once this is up and installed in the next three years?
Well, did you get that information at all, or is that something Ventura Water staff should be answering?
That's more Ventura Water staff. It should help implement, you know, for the future, and we do have, it is outdated and...
Current system.
Current system, yes. So, implementing these new radios will help, you know, the future of the system. And I believe Gina might have...
Hi, good evening. Gina Dorrington, General Manager for Ventura Water. The SCADA system that we have has held on fairly well, but technology has outpaced it. So, it is, it is a question of what new technology will outpace this. But we have piloted, we talked about the Ethernet radios, we've kind of piloted those internally, and we know that those have been really good and substantial in keeping us up and running. So, you know, we're, we're hoping that it's a good cycle, you know, 10 to 20 years, but we run the risk of the manufacturers no longer carrying replacement parts, and, and then we have to come back here again and upgrade to what is available on the market.
Thank you. Any other questions? If not, I'll go ahead and recognize any public comments that we may have on this item.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two speakers on item 10. Speakers will have three minutes. Our first speaker is Bert Handy, followed by Spencer Noren. No? Just Bert Handy.
Good evening, Council. It's been a very long meeting. You guys have done an excellent job. My question is, have the council and all the bidders looked for any AI connection on that? Doing research on it, gentleman by the name of Vitaly Cormane basically states in his conclusion of evaluations, "The implementation of AI in water and wastewater infrastructure not only improves the operational efficiency, but also enhances the resilience and sustainability of networks." From analyzing consumer data to optimizing water flow and deleting and detecting leaks, AI provides innovative solutions to the complex challenges faced with water operations. Additionally, integrating AI with SCADA systems and using it for risk prediction and predictive maintenance ensures a proactive approach to managing critical resources. As technologies continue to advance, AI will become increasingly essential in water infrastructure, controlling and sustainable and efficient resource management. Now, my question is, with the information that you're purchasing, is that AI capability? Did you, has anybody even looked at reaching out to any AI operations or companies to see how this could incorporate in this? And they may have the electronics needed to provide the services that you're looking for, and going in the future, that's where everything is going. And I believe that is something that should be evaluated before this bid is solidified. Thank you.
That concludes public comment.
Okay, thank you so much. So, bringing it back to council for any, for deliberation on this item, a motion is required to approve staff's recommendation. Question, Councilmember Schumacher?
So, just, can we answer Mr. Handy's question? Are we thinking about AI, or has that at all been brought up?
Thank you again, Gina Dorrington, General Manager for Ventura Water. So, this is to, is install the hardware and the software package to just get SCADA backup and responsive. I will say, though, that supervisory, you know, acquisition data control is AI. It is a form, it's a very early form of being able to monitor multiple systems at once and pull reports from data. It's a collection of data, and you can make operational decisions based on what you're pulling. So, there's different modules that come around when we have feedback loops, and it'll start to see a trend, and it will notify us of that trend, and we can make operational decisions on that. So, it's, it's sort of like, I would say, the basics of AI, and it has a lot of potential to build on it as we learn more, and we test those things, and we find reassurance that AI can, we can trust it as we move forward.
Is there technology out there currently that has been explored?
Yes, there's technology that's been explored. We are constantly getting emails and vendors approaching us and attending workshops about how AI, in fact, some of our members have been on panels to talk about how AI could be incorporated into our operations. So, it's something that's evolving, and we do that with extreme caution, being that these are such sensitive and important assets for the city.
And we're not ready to incorporate that into this?
This is for the structure. This is just to get the basic controls and communications through it. And then, as we, as we start to make sure that everything's working, we can, we can look, we can look out to what's available, but it is a form of AI already.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Dorrington.
Thank you. Anyone else? Councilmember McReynolds?
I move to approve staff's recommendation.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion and a second to approve staff's recommendation.
Thank you, Mayor, on the motion. Councilmember Duran?
Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven eyes, motion carries.
Thank you, thank you, staff.
Uh, Mayor, I did see a hand raised in our virtual, just wanted to let our virtual participants know that we had already called for public comment on the item.
Okay. Thank you. Moving on to our next item on our agenda, it's for items for future agendas. This is a time for any items for future agendas to be brought up under Government Code, Section 54954.2A3. We may, councilmembers may request the staff to report back or place a matter on business on future agenda. Councilmember McReynolds, followed by Councilmember Manganay.
This is more maybe a point-of-order question, but I was wondering if the city manager could provide during his council comments the effects of the federal government closure in terms of, I don't know if that's, if, yeah, the shutdown, but if that's appropriate for this forum, or to request that, or?
I certainly think that's great, it's certainly a moving target and evolving as time goes on, but I'd be happy to do that.
It'll be a month when we meet again, so.
Sure, absolutely, I think.
Okay.
I don't know if we need a second.
We probably do need a second.
Mayor, I, my only suggestion would be, I guess if, if Councilmember McReynolds and if the rest of the council were, were satisfied with the manager's statement, I don't think there's a motion that would be needed.
Okay, yep. We're good then, thank you. So you will bring back that report the next time we meet, thank you. So with that, we'll go to our, oh, we'll go to our councilmember, Manganay.
Good segue. I would like, you know, in the, in the general plan, there was Parks and Open Space Element, it's VUSD collaboration on a joint use agreement. So what I would like to do is direct the city manager's office to start looking into that, but more specifically, work with finance and, and bring back to council some numbers on what that would mean to the city and how that relates to future bond or sales tax measure. So we kind of know how that's the only way it could possibly happen, use these school sites as parks and open space. We have a potential bond sales tax measure coming next year. And just as, as finance brought us the numbers with how much it would, rough numbers to finish community park, reconstruct the fire stations, police and fire headquarters, just some rough, rough estimates as, as to what that would take. So potentially, we can incorporate that into some bond or sales tax measure next year.
I'll second that, and I think there were already some conversations, weren't there? The initial conversations already?
Yeah, and you, you are right.
Go ahead, Councilmember Duran?
Yeah, so just for clarity, this is for the bond measure, or like, or just open space? Because conversation with open space is already happening right now with-
I'm looking more specifically at the city manager's office and finance to kind of give us an idea of what that would cost, because it is gonna, there is gonna be a cost incurred by the city to maintain the school sites, additional Parks and Rec staff to go clean up, or whatever that means, facility staff, to look into that.
Do you need clarification?
Yeah, I think I, I think I'm understanding correctly, you're asking for an estimate of, for example, a menu, so to speak, of options that the school district could provide, and then costs that would be associated with that, kind of in perpetuity.
Certainly, yeah, and that's something that you would have to work with the, the district on, because there would be some kind of cost-sharing elements in there.
Sure. Okay, happy to do that.
And you had a second, okay, so.
On the motion, Councilmember Duran?
So we need to vote on this, if, if our city manager said, "I'll do it," we still need to vote on it?
Mr. City Attorney?
I think, Mayor, the question is, if the council wants a record of it, that it was direction, then it would need a vote if the council's satisfied. Yes.
Councilmember McReynolds?
Yes.
Councilmember Manganay?
Yes.
Councilmember Schumacher?
Yes.
Councilmember Campos?
Yes.
Deputy Mayor Halter?
Yes.
Mayor Dr. Sanchez Palacios?
Yes.
Seven eyes, the motion carries.
Thank you, okay, on to our second portion of public communications, do we have any general public communications?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, one final speaker, Spencer Noran. And Spencer, your slide's up, timer's over here.
Oh, thank you very much, Mr. McDonald, appreciate your help, sir. Mayor, council, VPD translation. I wanted to bring up some, two slides that have been posted on this Ventura Water Instagram page in the last seven days. And I know there's new messaging coming out throughout our community with the knowledge, and there's been other great informational slides, but these are ones I looked at very distinctly. From a term I've never heard before, which I think is inciting a little bit of too much fear personally, because I've never heard council ever direct this community about, "Imagine a day without water." I personally don't like it. I don't think that it's good taste, I think it strikes fear. I think it's, at the same time that the protest letters went out to the community, I think this drives division, to be honest with Mr. City Manager and council. And threatening, threatening to not have coffee, "My dog won't be able to drink water." "I'm unable to wash my hands without the Ventura Water Pier project." Is that what we're saying to our community? That if our bill that used to be every other month, now that every month doesn't times two against, ultimately timing by four, if my math is correct, that I'm gonna have a difficulty feeding my family? I don't think this is what council recommended, I don't think it's the intent, and I think it'd be corrected. I just wanted to let you know, if you hadn't seen it yet, I wanted to bring it to your attention. And I also wanted to bring your attention to some other crime and some unfortunate incidents happen in our community. Mostly this last week, a few times when a gentleman who was completely naked broke into a woman's house in the area of Montavo while her children and her were sleeping. And this was reported by the LA News, but not by our local Ventura Police Department. And so I was curious, who picks and chooses who posts on Instagram or shares what stories with us? Because the story also last week about a man confronting another man about having a dog off-leash in the promenade where a gun was brandished, if you didn't hear about that, very big problem, right? There's a lot of things in our community for safety concerns that I think need to be addressed that aren't talked about at council. I also shared this last week where a car drove from the landing on Main Street all the way on the promenade to Beach House Tacos. Luckily, they got their destination, but it's a long way to go to drive on the whole River Park Trail from Main Street to the pier, never addressed or never approached. Just a few things I wanted to bring up to you that's happened in the last seven days. As I look for more safety, especially on Victoria, between Victoria and Johnson, the gentleman who was nude in the house was just released from jail 48 hours before that. Thank you so much, have a great night.
That concludes public comment.
Thank you. Mr. City Manager, would you like to make any comments?
If the council wishes, I, I would like to have Ms. Dorrington come up and discuss the water campaign.
Sure.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Again, Gina Dorrington, General Manager of Ventura Water. And the Day Without Water is actually a national campaign sponsored by the U.S. Water Alliance for the Value of Water. It was launched in 2015, and it comes out in October of every year. We have adopted that since 2015, so annually, we pose a question. Sometimes it's to staff, sometimes it's to the public, to local businesses. We have a little sign that we have saying, you know, "What is water to you?" And people write that down, and, and we post it on our website. So it's a national campaign to promote water efficiency, water conservation, and thoughtful practices of water.
Thank you for that clarification. Okay, with that, we will go ahead and adjourn our meeting, it is 10:14. Our next regular meeting is Tuesday, November 4th. Thank you all again for being here, meeting adjourned.